Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this virtual convening of the Kentucky Board of Education today, October 7th, 2020. As we get started this morning, just a bit of preliminary first to welcome our new Commissioner, Dr. Jason Glass, to his first regularly scheduled meeting of the Kentucky Board of Education. We got to spend time with him yesterday and with one another in our retreat setting, thinking about all of the important work that lies ahead. So we are delighted to be able to introduce Dr. Glass to Kentucky at this meeting, and welcome. We are so glad you're here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have two new board members, from whom you'll hear in just a moment about who they are and why they chose to engage in this important work when they heard, when they received the call to join the Kentucky Board of Education. And they are Dr. Randy Poe and Soliana Messin, our first ever student on the Kentucky Board of Education. Now, we are giddy to invite Soliana to join our team, and we are just anxious to hear her perspective at the policy level and when we engage in decisions and knowing that when we make decisions about students, we are now making decisions with student voice at the table. So we are thrilled to have her, and we'll hear more from them in just a second. We heard from Bob Hall, the Executive Director of the National Association of State Boards of Education, yesterday, and I believe they just changed their map on their website to indicate that Kentucky is now the 30th Board of Education to have a student member. A few announcements, as always, by way of housekeeping for the conduct of virtual meetings. The meetings must comply with the requirements of the Open Meeting Act. Therefore, Kentucky Board of Education members must ensure that your video is streaming and you can be seen throughout the duration of the meeting. Please remember to mute your microphone when not talking, but also to unmute when you are speaking, so that we can see and hear you on this broadcast. For any items that require a vote, a roll call vote will be necessary to record the vote of each member, and at that time, the member should state his or her name, followed by "I vote to" fill in the blank. At this time, please turn off any other electronic devices nearby that may cause disruption to your sound feed. And before we take roll call, I have a couple of preliminary comments I'd like to make. First, most of our schools have begun returning to school in an in-person, in-person setting since the governor's recommendation not to return to in-person school until post-September 28th. So I know for one, I am thinking of you and praying for you every day, and I know these board members are as well, and we just want to, if we do have school personnel that who are listening, family members of students who have returned to school in person, just know that we appreciate all that you're doing to ensure the safest possible environment in our schools. And many, many thanks to the team at the Department of Education in partnership with the Department of Public Health for all that you did to pave the way for in-person reopening this fall. I'd also like to take a moment to revisit the important discussion that this board held on July 10th regarding a resolution to support equity and justice in all of Kentucky schools. That resolution solidified our commitment as a board team to equitable access to excellent educators for all Kentucky students, to closing achievement gaps, creating inclusive school climates, and helping students and educators address bias and injustice. As we consider items that come before us as a board today and always, let us not forget the importance of our commitment to racial equity in Kentucky schools. Without further ado, if you would, Jennifer, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
This is Joanne Adams, and I am present.
Claire Bat.
Claire Bat, present.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, present.
Mike Bowling.
This is Mike Bowling, and I'm present. I did want to announce that I'm in Lexington today, and I'm at my townhouse, and I'm having to go to a dental appointment at 2:30, so I just wanted the chair to know that, okay?
Thank you so much, Mike, and we'll note that in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Alvis Johnson. I'm present.
Cody Polly Johnson.
This is Cody Polly Johnson, and I'm present.
Patrice McCrery.
This is Patrice McCrery. I'm present.
Randy Poe.
This is Randy Poe. I'm present.
Sharon Porter Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, present.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, I'm present.
Lou Young.
This is Lou Young, and I am present.
Lieutenant Governor Jaclyn Coleman. And she may not be with us just yet, not just yet, okay. I believe we have Amanda Ellis for CPE President Erin Thompson.
Amanda Ellis, I am present.
Soliana Messin.
This is Soliana Messin, and I am present.
Allison Sloan.
This is Allison Sloan, and I'm present.
Thank you, Chair. You have quorum.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. The first item on our agenda today is the swearing in of our two new board members. As they assume their duties of office of the Kentucky, as members of the Kentucky Board of Education, our two new members, Dr. Randy Poe and Soliana Messin, will now take the official oath. We are pleased to have Ms. Lydia Sharp with us today to administer the constitutional oath.
Thank you, Chair. I will read the oath in its entirety, ask you to raise your hand, and then call your name afterwards to have you swear or affirm. So please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute, to the best of my ability, the Office of Kentucky Board of Education member according to law. And I do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state, nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God.
I affirm, Randy Poe.
I affirm, Soliana Messin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Leah. And Soliana, when you returned to Eastern High School, that first kid that challenges you do a duel, you now say to them, "I can't. I swore an oath." So you're good. You're good.
Got it, got it.
Welcome again, Dr. Poe and Ms. Messin, and congratulations on your appointments. As we mentioned yesterday in retreat, you make us whole, so we are delighted that you're here and looking forward to working with you and to getting to know you a little bit better. To that end, we have devoted some time this morning for each of you to have the chance to, for the board to hear and the public viewing audience to hear a little bit more about you. So, Dr. Poe, if you would start and just tell us a little bit about who you are and why you accepted the call to join us on the Kentucky Board of Ed.
Thank you, Chairman. It's my pleasure. Retired Superintendent of Boone County School, July 1 this year, spent 37 years in education in Boone County, started student teaching in Boone County, and did almost every particular job there, bus driver and so forth, throughout the particular career, and served the last 12 years, had the honor of serving the students of Boone County the last 12 years as Superintendent. During that time, we had rapid growth all the way through Boone County schools, you know, to become the third largest district in the state behind Jefferson and Fayette. So a lot of growth, a lot of buildings, a lot of master plan concept during that time. Currently, Executive Director of the Northern Kentucky Education P-20 Council. We serve eight counties, 18 school districts, preschool, post-secondary institutions, along with the Chamber. So it's kind of a outgrowth of the Chamber in the P-20 legislation of years ago. A lot of times I refer to it as, it's similar to, what the Pritchard Committee is for the state, we are for our region in Northern Kentucky. We advocate for public education. Also a founding partner of the National Center for Transformational Leadership Strategies. Through that, a adjunct professor at Northern Kentucky University, currently teaching in the superintendent certification courses. The reason for answering the call is a passion for public education. Public education is what gave me the opportunity to really experience the American dream, growing up in Newport. Limited economic means, public education gave me the opportunity to go to Northern and set that benchmark about hope, well-being, and grit of being determining factors of success. And I remember a college professor that told me that, we were studying micro and macroeconomics, I had him, and he reminded us in there that no matter what economic conditions that we face with, even like COVID today, you know, this is 30-some-plus years ago, is that people can take away your economic circumstances, but they can't take away your education and your values that you have. So that's the reason why I answered the call, is to continue that work, because I still feel that too young just to sit back and retire all the way. Also, 20 years ago in Boone County, we had selected and put the first student board representative on, on the Board of Education, selected position. So I am quite honored today that Soliana is, is being sworn in at the same time, and I have the privilege of being sworn in the exact time that a student board representative is. So I think that's in and of itself quite an honor, and I want to applaud the governor for the executive order that allowed that and the Commissioner, and I've been following the Commissioner and his different tweets and so forth about student voice, and I can tell you that our transformation in Boone County was because of student voice and what we learned over those 20 years, truly how to engage the students. So I'm quite honored, and I'm more like, use Lou Young's term, giddy about being sworn in at the same time as a student board representative. It's just awesome. So thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Randy, and that was a lovely segue to Soliana, and that is indeed very fitting, that the two of you would be sworn in together today. So thank you so much. And Soliana, good morning. If you would, do the same, please.
Yes, of course. Thank you for such kind words. Dr. Poe, hello, my name is Soliana Messin, and I am currently an 11th grader at Eastern High School in Jefferson County. I am under the Family and Consumer Management pathway over here. This is my second year serving on the KDE Commissioner's Student Advisory Council, where I provide input to Dr. Glass and previously to Dr. Brown. I am involved in the Pritchard Committee Student Voice Team, where I dissect educational issues and help, help that gap between all of Kentucky students. Excuse me. I wanted to join this board to kind of give a voice to students and to just allow them for their concerns and their needs to be heard within a board that, sorry, within a board that impacts them directly. So it's really important in that sense, and I'm truly grateful to have this opportunity as a student and to bring light those voices and those concerns of my peers to assure just an effective education system within Kentucky. So thank you so much for having me, and it's really an honor.
So eloquent. Thank you so much. We are already better because you're here and part of us, so thank you, and you're getting some welcome over in the chat, so be sure and take a look at that. And thank you. And with that, we will just know that you are a part of our team and that we will engage with you rapidly. We're providing mentoring support, and we just want to ensure that this is the best opportunity and experience for you as we move forward together as a team. At this point, the next item on our agenda is recognition of a special guest and adoption of a resolution. Although this guest is a familiar face to everyone here, and that's his happy face right now, we are pleased to welcome former Interim Commissioner of Education Kevin Brown back to another board meeting. I can almost guarantee that Kevin is really happy that he's here as a guest and not in an official capacity this morning. Kevin, when this board called on you to serve as our interim Commissioner of Education last December, none of us could anticipate what 2020 had in store, from a global pandemic to budget cuts and even a flood on the fifth floor of the Sauer Building. But no matter what was thrown at you, you always stood ready, without hesitation, to serve. That's just who you are. Today, the board would like to publicly thank you for your continued service to the Commonwealth, and in so doing, I would like for the board to consider adoption of a resolution in honor of your service. The proposed resolution reads as follows, and I know how much you like a good whereas. Whereas, the Kentucky Department of Education's mission is to partner with districts, schools, and education stakeholders to provide service, support, and leadership to ensure success for each and every student. Whereas, Kevin C. Brown dedicated his personal and professional time at great sacrifice from 2004 to 2018, realizing this mission. Most recently, Brown served as the Interim Commissioner of Education from December 2019 to September 2020. Whereas, Brown accepted the call to serve as interim commissioner before the onset of a global pandemic that would close schools to in-person learning for extended periods of time, and posed a very real threat to the health and safety of Kentucky citizens at all ages while wreaking havoc on the Commonwealth's economy. Whereas, through such turbulent times caused by the global health pandemic, Brown demonstrated capable, empathetic leadership with an unwavering commitment to fulfilling KDE's mission on behalf of each and every student and educator. Now therefore be it resolved by the Kentucky Board of Education to recognize and extend its sincere gratitude to Kevin C. Brown for his tireless service to the children of the Commonwealth during this time as interim Commissioner of Education. At this time, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the resolution honoring Kevin Brown. Is, do I have such a motion? I still move. Thank you from Dr. Robinson. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you so much. Do we have any discussion or any comments from Kevin C. Brown?
This is Leah. I'll start. Kevin, you took on a task and handled it so smoothly that it was, you're a godsend to this organization and the things that you had to handle and the manner in which you handled them, never getting flustered, always doing the right things. And if you look back over the history of your time served, I think it will be a great thing to see in the future, because it was a tough time, and you did an excellent job, and we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Todd.
Chairman Young, I'd like to add, I just want to thank Kevin as being a superintendent going through the process, and multiple times, not just this time, Kevin has stepped up to serve Kentucky, and people just will not realize the service that he's given to Kentucky. Many lives have been changed, thousands of children's lives were fed, and, you know, his motto of feeding the children and taking care of them allowed us as superintendents to flex our ability to do what we needed to do at the time we needed to do it, and not worry about someone looking over our shoulder. So as a former superintendent during the time, and not only during COVID, but the multiple times, Kevin's been steadfast. He's dared to step up to lead in times when it just, it was a crisis, and his, his passion for public education and his mannerisms helped led hundreds of people and administrators through one of the toughest times in history. So Kevin, on behalf of all the superintendents that were working during the time, and the teachers and all the others, thank you for your service to Kentucky. Kentucky's children are better off because of Kevin Brown, so thank you.
Lovely. Thank you, Dr. Poe. Dr. Robinson?
I just want to add, Kevin, that as we work together as a brand-new board and you in the interim role, we never could have foreseen the momentous decisions that faced us and the really challenging times that we had to navigate. In all of that, it was not business as usual, because it was business with exemplary integrity and honor to principles of equity and inclusiveness, even in your leadership style. I've been amazed at how you went out of your way to assure that voices were heard and positions taken into consideration, even as you were facing very, very tough decisions that were really, that couldn't be delayed. And I, I really honor that kind of leadership, because I think we have been so much better for it. I think we were able to come together as a board in a very short time with some really challenging decisions of our own that we had to make through the search for a commissioner and helping to support school districts as they attempted to serve our students in the face of, of a pandemic, which none of us had experienced before. But we were always well-served by your steadfast leadership and the way in which you honored principles of, of inclusiveness and integrity.
Thank you so much, Dr. Robinson. And Mrs. McCrery?
Kevin, you are so appreciated. You, with no warning of what was ahead of you, stepped into a position and you became the I in our storm. While, while COVID created chaos all around, you remained calm, you remained confident, and you remained considerate of all of those who are being affected by this. Your leadership is a true example of what excellent leadership is. So thank you. Thank you for stepping up to all of the challenges, and thank you for just being you all the way throughout.
So sweet. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bowling?
Kevin, I wanted to just tell the rest of the board members that you're not a newbie. I remember many years ago, when I was the school board attorney for the Bell County School System, that you were the acting, or you were the interim Commissioner of Education and, and of course, the school board attorneys interim council. Your information that you provided me and many of the state's school board attorneys over the years was just wonderful information, and we always knew where we could go to find out how to handle this latest situation, because as you know, there's not, there's not a course in law school that teaches school board attorneys. So I just wanted to thank you for your extra many, many years of service to the Kentucky Education System and from the many, many different positions you performed from, and therefore, it's meant a lot to a lot of Kentuckians. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bowling. And Ms. Sloan?
Kevin, everyone keeps saying that you entered this position previously without knowing what was coming, but I truly think that even if you had known what was coming, you still would have entered the position, and you would have done what needed to be done. I remember the very first email you sent us as a board, and I knew then that you would lead with your heart, and that our children and our teachers and our public school system was in good hands, and I appreciate everything you've done, but most of all, I appreciate your friendship, and I know that that will be lifelong, whether you're here with this board or not.
Oh, thank you so much, Ms. Sloan, and I really was expecting a Julia Sugarbaker quote, but that's okay. On to Mrs. Adams.
I couldn't find one quick enough.
Kevin, what I want to thank you for especially was the empathy and the humility with which you did your job. Every time I saw you speak, I could see the weight of the world sitting on your shoulders. I knew how much you cared about our students, how much you cared about our teachers, and you made such, such hard decisions, but I always knew that you were taking the lives of these students and their well-being so seriously, and you never took any credit for what was going on. You always just did it with such humility and such empathy that I had the utmost admiration for you, and I thank you so much for all that you did.
Thank you so much, Joanne. Well, if I, at this point, thank you all for sharing that, Kevin. I want to give you a chance to say anything if you want to, but don't feel like you have to, although we just reverse roasted you, but I hope you heard all of the sincere gratitude in those comments.
Dr. Young?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Johnson, and thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Kevin. Kevin, before I came on the board, I, I took time to check you out, a former board member, and he said, "Alvis, I tell you what, he's one of the sharpest guys you'll ever meet." And he has the empathy and the concern for every student in Kentucky. So to my neighbor down the road here, just a few miles, Kevin, thank you for your service and for your continued willing, willingness to serve the students and faculty and administration of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So thank you again and again. I want to echo everything everybody else has already said, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I want to thank everyone for this. If you've heard me before...
If I'm not mistaken, there's a couple people creeping outside your office, so you may want to go ahead and let them in. I know we still have to call the roll, but be prepared.
Yes, they are. They are creeping in my office now. They are. They do have masks on. I would like to say that, you know, you've heard me say before, I don't know that you should necessarily receive honors or awards for doing your job. I felt like I was doing my job, just like all of you, just like all the superintendents, the teachers. No one else changed and, and quit because of the, what happened. And I actually do want to correct something that was said. I did, I have, as my partner Sean will attest, I did get flustered several times, maybe not always on the webcast, but I want to thank him for his support, and also my mom and dad for supporting me. My mom wanted to make sure I was fed during all this, so I actually did put on the COVID-19 because of her. One of the things I took the liberty to do on my last day as Commissioner was to, I wanted to thank those that had helped me, and I kept during this time of, and particularly during a time of stress and anxiety and during a pandemic, I kept drawing on a lot of lessons learned over my career and educa, or over my edu, my own education, and of course, my post-secondary career, and that was very beneficial. But I kept drawing on a lot of lessons learned from elementary, middle, and high school. And so I took the liberty as one last act to send a note of thanks to all my teachers. And that's something that just stuck with me during the whole time about how I was well-prepared. My sister sent me a, a note during the pandemic early on, and she said, "I feel like you've been preparing for this your whole life," and, and I'm glad I paid attention when I was there with Kevin Nolan and Jean Will Hoyt and all the other commissioners that I, I can remember taking mental notes on things, and I think that really served me well. So I want to thank everyone. I did know something was up, and as everyone knows, I don't, I like being prepared at meetings, and so I did at least had a quote I wanted to read. Tony Konstatman gave me a quote book back in December when it was announced I'd be the interim commissioner, and the one quote that I turned to, and I used this at our first leadership team meeting in December. Of course, this was before the pandemic. We didn't know anything about it, and I want to read that to you. I think it's appropriate now, and I think it's appropriate, and also for, for Dr. Glass as he continues on with the team that I had the benefit of having. The quote says, "Teams often break down because of bad communication, they give up because of discouragement, lose momentum because they don't have a vision and purpose, and crumble because of negativity and jealousy. The answer is to become a positive, united, purpose-driven, selfless team." And I can say that we did become that, and we are that. I still say "we." I think the department is that, and I would say that about the whole state as we came together, and I've talked about the education family, and I really believe that. I think the challenge, though, in some respects, it's easier to become a, a purpose-driven team. purpose-driven, selfless team during a pandemic. I think our challenge now is how do we, uh, continue this focus, this intense focus and, uh, being this purpose-driven team when we, as we move beyond COVID to, uh, obviously improve education. I think that's the challenge. And so I'm glad to be back here on the front lines in Jefferson County. Soliana, I'm honored that you are, uh, on our board. And I had a little bit of, of a hand in the, some of the legwork on that. And so I'm, uh, very proud to see that. So again, I want to thank everyone and, uh, you just know I'm just down the road. Dr. Glass, uh, you've got to stay. I say, I think I have around 10 years before I can retire. We need to have consistent, uh, commissioner here. So we don't need another interim. Um, and then if, uh, I may need to change my name from Kevin since mostly in terms of being Kevin, if that's the case. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And before I call the roll, I do know that we have, not sure we'll be able to see them on camera, but on our behalf, we have, um, former Kentucky Board of Education Chair Senator David Karam and Director of Communications Tony Tatman are on site to present Kevin with a token of our appreciation, um, on behalf of the board for your work during this past, um, year. So, it is a bourbon barrel top, um, with our KDE logo and your name at the top and a note of appreciation there at the bottom. And if we can hear him, I would give Senator Karam a chance to add anything in there if you'd like to?
He was not able to make it this morning.
Oh, okay. All right.
At the last minute, he was not able to make it.
Okay, that's all right. So, he, he wanted you to know that he was, um, all in with recognizing you as well, Kevin. So, um, don't leave just quite yet. Uh, in the meantime, let's go ahead and make sure I take care of business. And Jennifer, if you would please call the roll, uh, regarding the motion and second resolution in honor of Kevin's service. And I think, have we had a motion and a second? We have. We were in discussion and now ready for the roll call. So, sorry about that. Okay, Joanne Adams?
This is Joanne Adams and with gratitude and admiration, I vote yes.
Claire Bat?
This is Claire Bat and I echo the gratitude and admiration, Kevin. Yes.
Holly Ledworth?
This is Holly Ledworth and I vote yes. And thank you very much, Kevin.
Mike Bowling?
This is Mike Bowling. And Kevin, for the many years that you've served the Commonwealth, uh, I vote yes enthusiastically.
Alvis Johnson?
This is Alvis Johnson. I vote yes. And again, thank you, Kevin.
Patrice McCreary? With a great deal of enthusiasm. This is Patrice McCreary. I vote yes. Thank you, Kevin.
Cody Johnson?
This is Cody Johnson and I vote yes. And thank you so much, Kevin. Thank you.
Randy Poe?
This is Randy Poe and enthusiastically vote yes. And all the other comments, thank you.
Sharon Robinson?
This is Sharon Robinson. From the bottom of my heart, which is how I saw you lead, I vote yes.
Lee Todd?
This is Lee Todd and, uh, Kevin, I'd just add to the remarks they made and wish you the very best of luck in, uh, whatever you do. I know it'll involve education. I vote yes.
And Lou Young?
This is Lou Young and my vote is an enthusiastic yes.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Kevin, for your service.
Thank you. I, I would just add, in addition to being flustered, sometimes after hours, I must admit, I may have helped empty that bourbon barrel, uh, after hours. Uh, that, that is an honor and, um, uh, the, the seal of the department, of course, uh, means a lot, uh, to me is I was, uh, that was developed under Dr. Pruitt and, uh, still continues on. And of course, um, you all know I love Kentucky and, uh, bourbon and, and it's very special. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kevin, I hope you look back on those nine tumultuous months and realize that you were just the right leader for just the right time. You are the unflappable Kevin Brown who led with such calm grace and unwavering determination to do the right thing for the children and youth we serve. Knowing that such a good person of integrity was at the KDE helm gave us all a sense of purpose and comfort. And you did it all with abiding humility, wisdom and courage. We want to ask you to stay for just a few more minutes. We might really have one surprise in store. So, at this point, I would turn our attention to item D, Discussion and Approval of the KBE 2020 Priority Award Title, Topic and Criteria. And so I'll turn it over to Committee Chair Patrice McCreary.
Thank you, Chair Young. I'm very pleased to put this before the board. On behalf of the Awards Committee, I move approval of revisions to the Kentucky Board of Education Priority Award to permanently rename the award as well as approve this year's topic and criteria. The Awards Committee met on Friday, October 2nd and decided it was most fitting to rename the award in recognition of Kevin Brown's time as interim commission as his service exemplified the need to focus on strategic areas affecting current educational needs. The proposed new name of the award would be the Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award. In keeping with this, the committee also brings forward a recommendation that this year's award topic seeks to recognize a person, group, organization, district, school or post-secondary institution who through policy, practice, fundraising or philanthropy has provided targeted efforts to educate, feed or support students throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Accordingly, I would like to ask the Chair for the board's approval of the permanent name change of the award and description and also of this year's award topic and criteria.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McCreary. We have a motion from Patrice for approval of the changes as she described them. Do we have a second?
Randy Poe, I'll second.
Thank you so much, Dr. Poe. We have a second. Um, any further discussion? Kevin, we hope this means that you'll come back at least annually to join us as we, um, award the Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award each year in your honor. Karen, no further discussion at this time. Uh, Jennifer, would you please call the roll? Joanne Adams?
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat?
This is Claire Bat. My vote is yes.
Holly Ledworth?
This is Holly Ledworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling?
This is Mike Bowling and I enthusiastically vote yes.
Alvis Johnson?
This is Alvis Johnson and I vote yes.
Patrice McCreary?
This is Patrice McCreary. I vote yes.
Cody Johnson?
This is Cody Johnson and I vote yes.
Randy Poe?
This is Randy Poe and I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson?
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd?
This is Lee Todd and I vote yes.
And Lou Young?
And this is Lou Young and I vote yes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much. Kevin, you are welcome to tell Dr. Polio that we said we thought you should have the rest of the day off, but I'll leave that up to you.
Thank you all so much. I'm, uh, honored beyond words.
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks again for being with us today. It's been a treat.
Yeah.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the 2021 NASB membership dues. Um, it is at this time, uh, for, it is time for the board to consider renewal of membership with NASB for the upcoming year. I was not very familiar with the work of the National Association of State Boards of Education until becoming a member of this board and our joining NASB earlier this year and have been really impressed with the work that they do. Um, we, you know, that we had the Executive Director Bob Hull join us yesterday for a service to our team through retreat, retreat. Uh, Ms. Sloan, Ms. Bat and I have had the opportunity to work on the, to be selected for and participate in the whole child policy work, um, at the national level with NASB. We've also had, um, I was able to serve on the Awards Committee this year. Lots of engagement and involvement. Their website is very rich and their resources are innumerable. So I have, um, had a per- personally had a really good experience with NASB. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve membership to the National Association of State Boards of Education for 2021 in the amount of $27,655. Thank you, Mr. Bowling. I saw, um, your motion. Do we have a second?
Joanne Adams, I second.
A second from Ms. Adams. Any further discussion or questions? Yes, Dr. Robinson?
I would just add that, um, having worked within that, uh, Washington, um, community of education associations, there is never a convening of significant policy influencers at the national level that does not include NASB. They are very service-oriented with respect to the membership and very activist-oriented, uh, with respect to advocacy for public education in DC. So, I think this is, um, money well-spent because we're going to get a lot of support from it.
Excellent. I'm really glad to hear that perspect- that inside-the-belt-way perspective as they say. Thank you. Karen, no further discussion. Uh, uh, Jennifer, if you would, please call the roll. Joanne Adams?
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat?
Claire Bat. My vote is yes.
Holly Ledworth?
This is Holly Ledworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling?
Mike Bowling votes yes.
Alvis Johnson?
This is Alvis Johnson and I vote yes.
Patrice McCreary?
This is Patrice McCreary and I vote yes.
Cody Johnson?
This is Cody Johnson and I vote yes.
Randy Poe?
This is Randy Poe and I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson?
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd?
This is Lee Todd and I vote yes.
And Lou Young?
This is Lou Young and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Before we go to the next item, I would also add members and to make sure that you are aware that NASB is offering, uh, at no cost, a new member institute to be held virtually on October 20th. If you, uh, are interested in that, just let Jennifer know and, um, she can get you registered or direct you to the registration portal for that event on the 20th as well. Uh, in a related next item, we will now consider approval of Kentucky Board of Education members to actually attend the 2020 Virtual NASB Conference to be held October 20th through the 23rd. So this is beyond the new member, um, session that I was just talking about. This year's NASB's, this year, NASB's Annual Conference will take place virtually from October 20th through the 23rd at this, this year's new, um, as this new year's new member institute was canceled due to the pandemic, I am recommending the board consider allowing up to five members to attend the annual conference. It is at a reduced rate. Um, so in the past, we haven't sent quite that many, but it would be much more cost-effective for this year since we would not be traveling. So, as a result, this is a really good opportunity for more KBE members to attend if you are available. At this time, I am anticipating that we will have, um, Claire Bat, Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman and Sharon Porter Robinson who have indicated an interest in attending. Do we have any others before I ask for a motion? All right. Then I would ask the board to consider, uh, a motion to approve Claire Bat, Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman and Sharon Porter Robinson to attend NASB's 2020 Virtual Conference on October 20 to 23. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'd second, yeah. Sorry.
Thank you. I heard Dr. Todd. Any discussion? I would just add my thanks to those three who were able to attend on our behalf and look forward to hearing more about what you learn during the conference. Jennifer, if you would, please call the roll. Joanne Adams?
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat?
Claire Bat. Vote's yes.
Holly Ledworth?
Holly Ledworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling?
Mike Bowling votes yes.
Alvis Johnson?
Alvis Johnson votes yes.
Patrice McCreary?
This is Patrice McCreary. I vote yes.
Cody Johnson?
This is Cody Johnson and I vote yes.
Randy Poe?
This is Randy Poe and I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson?
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd?
This is Lee Todd and I vote yes.
And Lou Young?
This is Lou Young and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. The next item on our agenda is to, is the approval of summary minutes. The minutes for August 6th, 2020, regular meeting, August 28th, 2020, special meeting, and October 2nd, 2020, Awards Committee meeting were distributed to you in advance. Are there any corrections to any of these minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bowling. Do we have a second?
Patrice McCreary, I second.
Thank you, Mrs. McCreary. Any discussion? Jennifer, if you would, please call the roll. Joanne Adams?
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat?
Claire Bat. I vote yes.
Holly Ledworth?
Holly Ledworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling?
Mike Bowling votes yes.
Alvis Johnson?
Alvis Johnson votes yes.
Patrice McCreary?
This is Patrice McCreary. I vote yes.
Cody Johnson?
Cody Johnson. I vote yes.
Randy Poe?
This is Randy Poe. I abstained since I was not part of the meeting.
Sharon Robinson?
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd?
This is Lee Todd and I vote yes.
And Lou Young?
This is Lou Young and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to consider action to suspend standing committee meetings. Um, for today's meeting, although standing committees are established in the KBE Policy Manual and are typically the way we do business, because of teleconferencing limitations and for the sake of efficiency, I would ask the board to once again entertain a motion to suspend standing committee meetings today. Do I have such a motion?
This is Holly Ledworth. I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Ledworth. And do I have a second?
This is Claire Bat. I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bat. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion about suspending standing committee meetings today? Thank you. Jennifer, if you would, please call the roll. Joanne Adams?
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat?
Claire Bat. Vote's yes.
Holly Ledworth?
This is Holly Ledworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling?
Mike Bowling votes yes. Mike Bowling votes yes.
Alvis Johnson.
Alvis Johnson votes yes.
Patrice McCrery.
This is Patrice McCrery. I vote yes.
Cody Johnson.
This is Cody Johnson. I vote yes.
Randy Poe.
This is Randy Poe. I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson.
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
This is Lee Todd, and I vote yes.
And Lou Young.
This is Lou Young, and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Always one of my favorite items on the agenda is our good news reports. KBE members will share the following good news items in this order. Paraprofessional of the Year, Dr. Sharon Robinson. 2020 Mary Mae Wyman, Outstanding Kentucky Counsel for Exceptional Children Member of the Year recipient, will be reported by Allison Sloan. Appreciation of School Nurses, Joanne Adams, and Healthy at Schools, at School and Supports from Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman. So if you would, Dr. Robinson. Looks like it's still muted. There we go. Perfect.
This is one of our favorite items because in the midst of all that's going on, it is, it's easy to forget to stop and say, "Good job. Thank you so much." And today we have the opportunity to recognize one of those important roles in our system that requires the same degree of diligence and dedication. And I would say in these days, just plain old courage to continue serving our students. And that's the work of our paraprofessionals. The recognition today, the good news today recognizes Lynn Ball of Kentucky School for the Blind. She's chosen as Paraprofessional of the Year by the Councils of School and Schools and Services for the Blind. She was nominated in February and awards were announced the first week of September. She will be recognized in October at the Virtual Council of Schools for the Blind Leadership Conference to honor this special leader who truly demonstrates excellence and compassion and innovation. The Kentucky Board of Education thanks Ms. Ball for her service and dedication to KSB students.
Excellent. Thank you. And congratulations, Ms. Ball. Ms. Sloan. You may be muted.
Sharon, it's all your fault because you did that a while ago. I am honored today to announce that the KDE Associate Commissioner Greta Hilton was chosen as the 2020 Mary Mae Wyman Outstanding CE, Kentucky CEC Member of the Year Award recipient. The purpose of this award is to honor the member who has chosen consistently unselfish service in promoting the educational welfare of children with exceptionalities in Kentucky. Greta was selected because of her leadership as the Associate Commissioner of the Office of Special Education Early Learning at the Kentucky Department of Education. The Kentucky Board of Education thanks Mrs. Hilton for her continued servant style of leadership, passion, and dedication, not only to the department, but also for her advocacy for each and every student across the state. And as a 22-year special education teacher in this state, I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Hilton for her work and her dedication to our students and her ability to be found and reached out to when there is a question and all help that she's provided to us teachers in the classroom. Congratulations, Greta. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Allison. And hearty congratulations, Associate Commissioner Hilton. Thank you. And Ms. Adams.
I would like to take this opportunity to share some of the great things being done by our school nurses across the state. Since schools closed for face-to-face learning in March, school nurses have been working diligently toward getting students back to school as safely as possible. Nurses share newly developed forms, protocols, and educational materials with other school nurses to use as a guide for developing their own practices. An example of personally sharing information was done by Paula Rust, District Health Coordinator for Kenton County. Ms. Rust consulted with both her local health department and the Kentucky Department of Public Health to develop a decision tree for COVID-19 response for staff and students. She selflessly shared this with districts across the state to assist them in developing one that suited their district's needs. She continues to be in constant contact with the health department to keep the decision tree updated with new changes and recommendations. Another example of excellent work was done by Belinda Stivers at Eminence Independent here in my home county. Ms. Stivers developed her own Bitmoji Nurse Office. While educators rolled out virtual learning Bitmoji classrooms, and that's been one of the favorite things of mine, I helped my granddaughter doing her virtual learning, the Bitmoji Nurses Office allowed students and families to access training videos and information on healthy habits, how to wear masks correctly, health updates for the district, and also gave a means to contact her with any concerns or questions while participating in remote learning. There are numerous examples of exemplary work also all across the state where school nurses became detectives as they searched for PPE and needed supplies and additional space for isolation areas, served as advocates for students with underlying health conditions, attended ARC meetings, and developed individualized healthcare plans for their students. And more importantly, they served as educators as they developed and trained students, staff, and their communities on a variety of subjects to include proper use of PPE, basic hygiene habits such as hand washing, and covering coughs and sneezes to what symptoms of illness to report. Nurses are an integral part of our school communities and always willing to go that extra mile for their students. The Kentucky Board of Education thanks Ms. Rust and Ms. Stivers and all of our school nurses across the state as they work tirelessly to keep our students healthy at school. Thank you also to the KDE Education Nurse Consultant Angela McDonald as she too has worked tirelessly to support all of our amazing school nurses. Thank you so much, school nurses, for all you do in these unprecedented times.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Adams, and to all those school nurses out there. Thank you. Thank you for your frontline service. We really couldn't do school reopening this fall without you. Thank you. I'm not sure that Lieutenant Governor Coleman has been able to join us yet. I know that Ms. Reber is here. We can perhaps postpone this good news item until Lieutenant Governor gives her update report. Let's do that. We'll come back. Thank you so much. And thanks to all the board members for sharing the good news items. It's always important, like Dr. Robinson said, for us to stop and remember to celebrate and thank all those folks who are engaging in just such critically important work in our schools today. At this time, we will enjoy a report from the President of the Council on Post-Secondary Education from Associate Vice President Amanda Ellis.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to be with you on day two. And I feel like some of the things I'll be sharing really are a reflection of our conversation yesterday. So Dr. Thompson is, sorry, he can't be with us today, but we also have a president's meeting and preparing for our board meeting as well. So thank you for giving me the opportunity, Chair Young. So just a few highlights that Dr. Thompson wanted me to make sure and share with the board is that we are really excited about the potential partnership we have with the KBE and KDE on really recommitting our, our efforts into the P-20 education pipeline. And we know, as we talked a lot about yesterday, about the intentionality of each part of the transitions that students experience are, you know, something we believe in and really have an equitable access and support that students need to successfully transition into each piece of that for ultimate, for ultimately to help them reach the goals that they set for themselves. And we can help guide families and students into that work. And so we look forward to our conversation, actually that we will be meeting this week, again with Commissioner Glass and Lieutenant Governor Coleman. And Dr. Thompson and I will be putting together our heads together to finalize some of our goals around what we want to do as called a Access to Success. And it's really focusing on middle and high school students and their families. And how do we best communicate collectively as educational leaders in our state as well as many partners we have across the state that want the same things for Kentuckians? And so we'll be working on that to develop an advisory. It is a little bit different than the former P-16 Council. It's probably a little more focused, but ultimately under the umbrella of the P-20 efforts to really improve outcomes for our students and their opportunities. So we look forward to that. Also, CPE recently released a dual credit report on the impact of dual credit. We've seen a significant increase. Actually, we've had an increase of 75% of participation over the past five years. We still have work to do with underrepresented minorities. We don't have a large enough number participating, and we need to dig into why. So one of the pieces of work we'll be doing is reestablishing the Dual Credit Advisory Council, which will fall under that Access to Success to really look at accessibility for students just in the criteria and as well as the quality of the courses that are offered. There'll be two more webcasts coming up in the next few months as our research team works to share. We did outcomes, positive outcomes and predictors for four-year institutions. The next, which David Mahan calls 2.0, will be focused on those who matriculate into our community colleges and two-year degrees, how they, dual credit has impacted them. And then also the success in individual courses. What courses are students actually taking in dual credit? And what is that showing as far as success in our post-secondary institutions? So we're looking forward to that. We also have a communications that is going on that kicked off. It's called Higher Education Matters. It's a digital media campaign that pushes out three times a week. It's different tweets and quotes from students and faculty of why higher education matters. If you heard Dr. Thompson at all yesterday, he is very adamant and rightfully so, really pushing that it's important that our, our students and our adults who don't have a degree or credential that would help them acquire a competitive wage job is, is something that we need to do. We need to improve those who are receiving degrees and credentials to really help increase our economy and do what's right. And so that messaging campaign is taking place. You probably see it on Twitter. We also have a partnership with KC TCS that's promoting the Work Ready Scholarship. There's a grant through the Lumina Foundation with different media ads that are being run. The Adult Promise Grant is what it's called, and we're trying to promote that as well for our adult learners. And then today, we will actually be meeting for a second time with our student advisory. So Dr. Thompson was very inspired and encouraged by the student advisory that KDE supports and facilitates and knows, we all know that student voice is absolutely essential. So we have 22 students. They come from different backgrounds. They are not all right out of high school or traditional tracks. Many are adults who have families who have come back to post-secondary to give us a very wide range of perspectives on post-secondary experiences and ways we can improve policy and the ultimate experience for our students. So just wanted to give that update. We really are excited about the work that the KBE talked about yesterday to be a part of that. We want to be active partners, absolutely, and know that it's essential for all of our students in Kentucky of all ages. So Chair Young, I will stop there and be happy to answer questions if I'm able to do so. And thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ellis. And it is really exciting to have you as an extension of Dr. Thompson's membership on our board and engaging with us in the retreat and then again today. So thank you. We love that partnership. Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Ellis or any thing about which you'd like to have more information? All right. Thank you so much. We're a bit away from the agenda. Lieutenant Governor Coleman has been able to join us. But I want to give her a minute to get in and get settled and into the rhythm of the meeting. So Dr. Glass, if you would, I'd like to go ahead and give you this opportunity to share some brief updates on the work of the department and anything else that you'd like to share.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'll do my best to be brief and acknowledge that I covered much of the work that I've been doing over the past few weeks with you yesterday. I just want to briefly acknowledge again the support that I've received from educators and leaders in the state just in my entry over these past few weeks. It really has been tremendous, the level and sincerity of support that I've received. So thank you to everyone who was part of that. And also again, to acknowledge the support that I've received from the Kentucky Department of Education staff and leadership team. The staff at KDE are, are known nationally for their expertise and commitment. And I can affirm just from having the chance to work with them these past few weeks that that's, that reputation is based on, on reality. And they, they really are a tremendous asset that the Commonwealth has and that, and that the whole education and the system in the state has. And just from what I'm, I've experienced these past few weeks, we should be very grateful for the, the commitment and expertise that this group has. I, I want to share my screen with you just briefly. But before I do that, I want to also acknowledge and thank the board for the time that you put in yesterday. I think that work was important and grounding. I know it took up a lot of time. And I, I'm grateful for the time that you invested in doing that. But I do think that getting clarity on where we'd like to go going forward, both you as a board, what goals you have for me as a, as your commissioner, they, they set the course for us. And I appreciate that clarity and think that that will pay dividends for us over this next year. So I'm grateful for the time that you spent with, with me doing that. Looking ahead this year, we've got management of COVID to continue to work through, and that may become more challenging. The problem just keeps sort of evolving and shifting. And now we're going to have to work on, with so many schools now open for in-person learning, how are we managing outbreaks that are bound to occur? How are we doing contact tracing? How are we closing down and then reopening and restoring in-person learning? And continuing the mitigation efforts that are in place across the state. So that's where the problem is going to shift to now and probably something that we're going to be managing for the next several months. We also have important work to do around anti-racism and equity. It's highlighted in the resolution that the board passed this summer. It's included in your goals and included in my goals. So we have to lift that up and continue that important work. We've got challenging work ahead, both in the current fiscal year and probably in the next fiscal year around economic fallout from COVID and budget shortfalls related to that. So we'll have to see what exactly that looks like. We have troubling news out of Washington that talks apparently have broken down around any further supports of COVID-related supports, but we'll, we'll see what happens with that. There really, I think, will be a tremendous urgency, especially when state legislators get back together in the spring and they start to look across the country around what the economic impact of COVID has been and how devastating that's going to be on everything that states fund. And education is, is the top funding item for, for all states or one of the top funding items for all states. So it's, it's going to have an impact unless there's some kind of support that's put in place. And then as we also talked about yesterday, I look forward to this important conversation going forward around the future of education and the Commonwealth and how we can involve all persons that live in Kentucky in that conversation and really put forth a vision that is built upon the aspirations of Kentuckians. So thank you again for the time clarifying your goals, clarifying my goals, and all of that relationship building work that we did yesterday. I do think it will pay dividends for us. I have just a brief, a few items further to share with you. Let me share my screen, maybe. Let's see. There we go.
Perfect.
Thank you. So just something that we normally would do in person with you, but we're going to do it a little differently here. Hopefully you'll have the chance to meet these individuals in person. But it's a tradition that we introduce new staff for you. We have Julie Martin, who joined us on September 8th in the Division of Support Student Tracking Data Branch. Also, John Hill joined on October 1st in Safe and Supportive Schools Branch. Also, John Hill joined on October first in uh Safe and Supportive Schools Branch. Uh we have Eric Turkparte uh joined in the um uh Data Management Branch and Benjamin Riley in the Division of Assessment and Support. So welcome to these new staff members. I have not had the chance to meet these folks either yet in person, uh but look forward to meeting with them. Uh you know, they're just a handful of people that work here at the Sauer Building um every day. But I do know that uh there's a tremendous amount of work happening uh out uh in in homes and offices across the state. Uh the the work continues to move along at the Kentucky Department of Education, even though um we're not physically present here in the building uh for obvious reasons. I also understand that the board likes to receive some updates on uh the two schools that you directly uh govern, uh the School for the Blind and the School for the Deaf. So I'll give you a quick overview of some things going on with them. Uh School for the Blind began NTI on um August twenty-fourth uh in a school-wide effort. And they were providing support uh to kids all across the state uh using NTI. Student attendance during it uh this period has been high. Uh and the School for the Blind does have a reopening plan that they're working to execute right now. Um the KSB staff will be returning on October twentieth. They'll begin small group residential uh work on October twenty-sixth and then with a a full reopening uh uh plan uh following a a um a reopening plan that they developed with mitigation efforts by November ninth. And so that's their plan for reopening. Uh shifting uh for the Kentucky School for the Deaf, they also began uh uh NTI on August twenty-fourth, have had a host of different supports for uh students and parents, uh families across the state during this period of uh NTI. And uh of note here, uh KSD staff delivered materials, supplies, laptops across the state and continue to deliver supplies and technology when it's needed. They are also planning on bringing their staff back on October twentieth with a full reopening plan, again with mitigation efforts, and and they have a reopening plan that they put in place by uh October twenty-fifth with a an option for virtual learning uh for students that wish to remain in that. Um just a quick, a few things about uh both schools. The campus lighting uh project at KSD is well underway. Uh it will bring increased security and emergency lighting um uh and and improve the aesthetics at at the campus. Uh both of the uh schools spent a lot of time ensuring students were provided uh food service during NTI. Staff delivered meals across the state to feed those um that requested food for the first two weeks of school. And then the staff at the schools have worked with local school districts to uh develop agreements to continue that feeding of students during this period of NTI. Shifting to the uh Area Technology Centers, um Dr. Beth Hargis began with us on September first um in uh OCTE um as the Director of Technical Schools, so we welcome her. On September twenty-eighth, uh the ATCs uh developed and implemented a reopening state-operated uh tech area technology centers for in-person instruction plan uh that David Horstman uh chiefly worked on. Uh it uses the uh color-coded metrics in the state uh as a driver in the decisions that are made. And there are complex relationships
Hello?
Those ATCs have
Hey, hold on a second. My turn, my other volume down here.
Uh there are there are complex
Hey.
Hey, Tony? Yeah, um can you mute? There we go. Uh there are complex relationships that um the ATCs have with um districts in the state depending on the configuration of that ATC. So some of them are isolated to one uh community. Several of them serve multiple districts or communities. And so uh there are different contingency plans to based on those uh arrangements about how the ATCs are opening. And a celebration, uh Paducah, Wayne County and Mason County uh Career Magnet Center all moved into new buildings this year. And so uh once we get past COVID and and we have a chance to tour those, uh if you're in those parts of the state, make sure that you stop by and and we can arrange a a tour for that. And I will certainly certainly do so once we get past COVID as well. And with that, Madam Chair, that uh concludes my report. Thanks so much again for all the time today and yesterday. We're grateful for your service, board.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Commissioner Glass. And I loved hearing the updates on uh reopening plans for KSB, KSD and our Area Technology Centers. And again, we wish them a very successful and safe reopening of schools in person later in October and in November. So thank you. And um I would echo just our appreciation back to you for the um support yesterday. I felt like our outcomes were solid. We had a very productive day, so thank you for your leadership there. Um Lieutenant Governor Coleman, we can um skip to your report if you're ready or give you a little bit more time, whatever works for you. Um but we'd also like to hear your good news item as well. Is this a good time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much and thank you for um being patient with me.
No, I appreciate it, whatever time we can get.
Yeah. Uh so first I want to say a uh official welcome to uh Dr. Poe and Soliana for joining us. I feel like um our board is now complete, so that's that's excellent news. Um in the cabinet, we have been working uh as as obviously uh the Department of Education has too on a lot of the scree- school reopening uh supports, uh trying to be as supportive as we can and flexible as we can to give districts and um classroom teachers and our students what they need. Uh part of that um is us finding a sense of urgency with uh the digital digital divide. Um we are very lucky in Kentucky, huh? I didn't mean to make that rhyme, but we are, um that we have the Department of Education uh and and uh uh the Technology Office because we have um a pretty expansive um Wi-Fi access for our students, uh more so than than many people uh across the country. Uh but we're really committed to getting to that last mile. And so we've been working with um all all kinds of uh collaborators across uh the administration, uh the Department of Education, uh Finance, our Tech Office, um uh the Governor's Office, uh because we want a short-term and a long-term fix. In the short term, we we have a sense of urgency to get as many hotspots to as many places in Kentucky as we can uh for that K twelve uh education connection, uh especially since so many um of our students um either have been learning from from home or are still learning from home uh remotely. Uh a long-term fix is going to take obviously a little bit longer, but we are convening those meetings uh internally and we are uh preparing um some partnerships externally um in the public and private sectors uh to get this done uh for our kids, but not just for our kids, for our families, because this has obviously become a workforce issue as well. Um and so as the Secretary of Education, Workforce Development, we have to be cognizant of both. Um so speaking of workforce, uh we have pivoted to um uh basically a focus on uh returning people who have left the workforce uh back. And that could be in the same role or it could be in a different role. Um we have many uh gaps in the uh jobs of the future uh that we are ready and and uh willing to fill. And so we're partnering with lots of groups on that. The Department of Education, obviously, um the uh uh Council on Post-Secondary Education, uh workforce, labor, economic development. Um we are really, really trying to dial in on displaced workers, uh populations that have been dis- disproportionately affected by COVID uh so that we can uh align and offer trainings and education programs to get folks back on their feet and back in the workforce. Uh that is obviously a huge undertaking um in itself. But again, that sense of urgency because of um the circumstances where we currently find ourselves and and not just in Kentucky, but across the country. Uh so that work continues to be really, really expansive and and it's um work that education is the foundation of. Um and so uh as I as I uh have meetings in my role as Lieutenant Governor, but also as as the Secretary, uh we just keep coming back to the foundation of all of these solutions is education, uh whether we're talking about healthcare and access and and um uh whether we're talking about uh getting folks back in the workforce, all of it leads back to what what we do every day in education. So I'm really excited. I said this yesterday, I coined a, I'm going to coin a Kentucky phrase, that we have a superfecta in Kentucky now. Um we we've we've had Aaron Thompson as a CPE president for some time now. So he's the he's the the uh gold standard. Um we elected a governor who is a a pro-public education governor. Uh we appointed the best board in the country uh that is officially complete. We weren't the best board in the country until today. Dr. Poe and Soliana, you made us the best board, so we're now the best board in the country. Um and then we uh appointed a commissioner uh who is going to help us to create um help all of us come together and create that continuum through Kentucky where we all come together and invest in education and um recognize uh that it is the foundation of all of the work that we do. And it is the way that we're going to recover from uh all of the crises that have been um thrust upon us by this pandemic. So it's really, really big work that we're all doing. I'm grateful across the administration and within the department that we're able to uh break down those barriers that might have existed before and collaborate and work together uh because we're all heading in the same direction. Uh it just helps if we're all rowing together. So um the partnerships, the collaboration that we have been able to build has been nothing short of remarkable. I think if anybody's been in state government before, that doesn't happen too often. So I'm really great that education is leading the way in in this movement. So uh we'll continue to to keep doing um this work. Um like I always say, the pandemic has uh created a new set of challenges for all of us, but it has compounded old ones. And so when we look at disparities in healthcare and and the workforce and education, um they're the same. Uh we just are at a point where we um have to confront those challenges that we face. Um I have met with the uh Black Caucus in Kentucky uh and we have talked about funding for um the uh Kentucky Academy for Equity and Teaching. So that's uh going to be a priority moving forward. We want to get that program funded again and get it moving. Um and then, of course, um our work to implement implicit bias training across uh the state. Um I want Kentucky to be the first state that um implements this in every school across Kentucky for every teacher and school employee. I think that says a lot about um our values and our priorities and our investment in the next education uh the next generation uh of Kentuckians. So um lots of stuff going on, really big, exciting work. So thank you all for your partnership and and helping make these things happen.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Governor. Um and um especially for um the confluence of your ideas around um training uh for implicit bias and the work that Dr. Glass mentioned earlier too. Um seeing those uh big ideas, big important ideas, turn into action is really gratifying for us as a board. So thank you. Um and I would ask Joette, please, if you'll go back to the good news items and put up that um good news report from Lieutenant Governor Coleman, just anything else that you want to add about healthy at work and sports as a good news item, we'll also give you the chance to do that as well.
Oh, good. And does she, the, I guess Joette has the picture?
We'll give Joette a second to get that up. Yep.
Okay, good, good. It's always nice um with all of the challenges that we're facing to be able to share good news sometimes.
Exactly. You were talking about just pause and celebrate when we can, yes.
Oh, it looks like it's coming up.
Yep.
Here we go. So here's a a couple of good news items, and I've shared these before, but they're worth sharing again because this this is the kind of thing that um we're all so proud of here in Kentucky. Um on on the uh left side of your screen, um there are, this is a a great example from um East Jesmen High School Football Team. My friend Mike Bowlin is the is the football coach there. Not to be confused with Mike Bowling, who's on the Board of Education. These are different people. Um so this is a great picture from his sideline where he's clearly keeping his kids spaced out. Everyone has masks on. And it is uh one of those examples of how um these kids are willing to do the right thing and the coaches are great leaders in making sure that they do the right thing so they can keep playing uh because ultimately that's what they want to do. And so um we we really appreciate all those positive examples of high school athletes um and and coaches doing the right thing. Uh and then on the right, we have a teacher who is uh, she's from Henry Clay High School and her name is Jenny Ward. And she actually took her students, I'm going to say air quote, took her students on a virtual uh field trip uh to the Capitol. And so she was able to show them the exact places um where historic figures were at the March on on Frankfurt in nineteen sixty-four. And so, you know, we we talk about our teachers and how um they are going above and beyond uh to to meet our kids where they are and to create great opportunities and experiences for them. And so this is clearly something that that uh Jenny didn't have to do uh but did and loved it and said that her students had uh had an amazing time um going through that virtual field trip. And so she really is trying to make the best of a tough situation. And teachers across Kentucky do that every day, and so we want to thank all of them for doing that.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. Um and that concludes our good news reports and our report from uh the Secretary of Education of Workforce Development, Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman. Um the next item on our list, and we are running early, yay for us, introduction and discussion on impact of Senate Bill one fifty-eight on accountability. Um I, we have Associate Commissioner Rhonda Sims. I saw that uh Dr. Brian Gong had signed in, so hopefully, Rhonda, are you set and ready to go a little bit early?
We, we are set and ready to go a little bit early.
Excellent. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And Chair Young, uh I'm not sure if you want us to pause periodically for questions or if you'd prefer us to sort of go through the basic presentation and then have the conversation. Uh we have about twenty slides. So they're very quick.
Yeah, we're getting further into the um details here. So board members, if you do have a question, go ahead and just unmute and um catch Rhonda's attention and we'll answer those as we go along. Let's let's spend a little time on this one since we're running early.
Sure.
That's okay with you?
Absolutely, absolutely it is. And uh we, I do have a great A-team with me today. Uh we will have Jennifer Stafford on, who serves as Director, Dr. Stafford, in the Communications Area for Assessment Accountability. Kevin Hill, who is our Data Policy Person. Dave, Kevin is on standby with questions he said I'd prefer you all present. And then we are very fortunate to have Dr. Brian Gong with us. Uh many of you uh know uh Brian from earlier work in Kentucky. He brings uh with his work at the Center for Assessment a incredibly strong national experience and a source of knowledge and expertise to our work in Kentucky. So we are very fortunate to have um Dr. Bri- Brian Gong be available to us and to the center, uh other of his colleagues. So uh I I want today uh you have an opportunity to sort of get to know him. He's going to help us with one part of the presentation and will be certainly very valuable as we begin this work. And I was excited to be able to hear most of your conversation yesterday with the board. And I know that you want to see, moving forward, the accountability system do more than just compliance with SB one fifty-eight. So today, I think, is the first step in us understanding uh some goals and concepts and ideas, things that you want us to bring back to you for deeper discussion. So I would liken today to be a little bit in laying out, I've heard it referred to many ways, the guardrails, the parameters, the legal base, uh both in state and federal law for what we need to do for accountability. And we're going to hit on assessment just briefly, just some general information. And they are certainly related areas and they work together. And we're going to lay out for you in these initial slides sort of a timeline for us to begin that work with you as a board. Uh but they are also separate. And so we want to focus first on accountability with today's deeper conversation. I think we're also working, Chair, with uh developing a work session time for you and the board. And so today, your questions and your conversation and your thoughts will really help us design that work session so we can go one step deeper as we begin to do what's necessary for accountability uh to both to be compliant with one fifty-eight, but to deliver the desired outcomes you have as a Kentucky Board of Education. Uh we, let me mention before we start with the PowerPoint that we did provide for you a little side-by-side comparison chart that we developed. Uh we tried to take these sort of complex concepts, but make them simplistic in their presentation. And uh in that side-by-side chart, we'll pull from that today in the uh in the presentation. But you were able to see what is required in federal law, what is required in Senate Bill one fifty-eight, what we had in the prior system of accountability. And then we've highlighted for you the four big areas where we know there must be action by the board to be in compliance. But please don't feel like we're limiting that conversation. We know you want to do more than be in compliance with one fifty-eight. Uh but we have highlighted for you where the compliance pieces will need to be addressed. Uh so, yes.
I would just throw in, I don't even know if you know this yet, but yesterday we developed our initial cut at some board goals. And uh thoughtful implementation of Senate Bill one fifty-eight will be one of our goals that we'll And thoughtful implementation of Senate Bill 158 will be one of our goals that we'll consider.
Absolutely.
So this is super timely. And board members, you'll find that side-by-side comparison that Rhonda mentioned in the portal if you would like to open that up and take a look as she speaks today as well.
And then Chair Young, we have also pulled some information from that chart to be in the PowerPoint today. But today is to give everyone kind of this same equal grounding of what is required in law, both from a federal level and a state level. And as I mentioned at the very beginning, hopefully the microphone picked it up, we know from the conversations yesterday, the board sees this as an opportunity. And I would agree, it is a time for opportunity to do more of what you want to do with accountability to meet the overall goals and targets. I think I saw Dr. Glass appear on camera. Dr. Glass, were you wanting to share, or did your camera just come on?
No, go ahead, Rhonda. I was just popping on.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and begin kind of walking you through, again, this sort of, this, I would call it a central base, but your conversation today, your questions for us, your concepts that you're beginning to talk about, all will help us then design a deeper dive into the accountability issues to come back into your work session. So we really welcome that. That will help us shape that work session for you. So as we move to Slide 2, and I think Joette is working our PowerPoint for us today, these are the four sort of topics in our time that we have with you this morning. And obviously, we might have a little bit extra, but let's just go ahead and say here's what, where we started with today in the presentation. We do want to lay out a bit of a timeline that obviously can be altered by the board, but to move us toward this discussion, we want to focus on what 158 does bring in that's different to accountability and to make sure we're all aware of the federal requirements of ESSA. And then to tie up the timeline for the future work for the accountability reg part of this work. And obviously, we'll be looking at both accountability and assessment moving forward. So as we move to Slide 3, I will remind you, and probably you are well aware of this as board members, there are some statutory responsibilities that come to the Kentucky Board related to an assessment system and to an accountability. And you will notice here, we show these as separate pieces because we see them as separate. The regulations are separate, but they're also highly connected and interactive with each other. So the assessment system, you can see it's the preview of the board to create and implement a balanced test, a balanced statewide, statewide testing program. And it sets out those statutory requirements, and it does ensure compliance with Every Student Succeeds Act. There are things in regulation, in statute for assessment, we'll review in a future meeting, but this also is the goal of the department and the goal of KBE as directing the department in its work. The accountability system, you can see there, there are three sort of big ideas. Part of that is the classification of districts and schools, making sure we can meaningfully differentiate public schools on where they are in performance related to the school, the district, and to student groups. And I know we've had lots of rich conversation, I heard yesterday, around our concerns about groups of students in Kentucky as well as individual students. And then it is a combination of school indicators of quality and academic indicators, obviously. As we move to Slide 4, we want to introduce a term here. We want to talk in terms that we think we are on a bit of a triple track approach to this work. Track one is we need some more immediate decisions on the accountability regulation, how we approach certain things that are in statute, plus where you may want to make some edits and changes to what has been current. So in no way do I want you to feel like that our current status quo of the accountability system, what we've most recently done, is where we think we need to be. We want to reflect what the goals are of the board moving forward. So immediate design decisions on the accountability, we've listed a few of those, and there will be some key things. These are the ones we know will need change moving forward. On track two, we want to begin to see the building that foundation for improving the assessment. What can we do as we move forward? What can we do in stages? What can we do in the more long term? And then I think finally, it ties into Dr. Glass' work on the future of what education in Kentucky is and how maybe the role of assessment accountability supports that. And that's how do we create this transformational assessment system that maybe better supports the growing of learners in Kentucky? What are those long-range sort of goals?
And Rhonda, if I could just...
So we see that this is kind of, absolutely, Dr. Glass.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to underscore the point that you just made. We think that this triple-track approach is really important for the board to take note of. There are some things that we have to do in the short term with 158 and with restoring an assessment and accountability system for the spring that we need to manage. And so that is track one. We also have listened closely to the things that the board has been talking about in the past few meetings and in some of our conversations with individuals or small groups of you. And we know that there is a desire to sort of create some incremental change, start experimenting or trying some innovative things, and that really is that second track. And then we know from that conversation we had yesterday that there is a desire for a broader sweeping look at assessment and accountability and what that could be, which is that third track. So I just wanted to underscore the importance of us managing all three of these tracks and highlight it again, and thanks, Rhonda, for recognizing me. Sorry to break your stride.
No, not at all, Dr. Glass.
And very helpful of you. Yes, so you, Rhonda, and Jason, thank you so much for capturing the, both the intent and around compliance and implementation, but with that aspiration of long-range transformation. Thank you.
You're welcome. And as we go to Slide 5, we've sort of put out a little bit of a timeline. Obviously, this is open to your discussion and to your edit or tweaking of that. Obviously, today, in this time that we have together in October, we want to make sure we all have sort of an equal grounding of all of the guardrails, I call them bookends, all the things that we kind of legally have to consider, with there is room between those to obviously make lots of good decisions. So October, we'll introduce that for accountability, and that's our time with you today. Very important, then, your conversation with us today to help us build that next step. So we've talked in terms of potentially a November work session with the board. I don't think a date has been established yet, but there's been some conversation around that. So obviously, our conversation today will help us build a deeper understanding into the work session. Then December, we would come back with the first regulatory language of the accountability reg that's in that first track one that needs sort of immediate attention. And we also could do an introduction to assessment based on, again, the kinds of things you are interested in learning and knowing more about. And we will rely both internally on our contacts and knowledge and information, but also we'll look to our national partners with a number of groups to help us with that process. Then by February, we would have the second reading of the accountability regulation that will open it to public comment, and we could do more with the assessment design discussion. And so obviously, then moving forward as permitted. So this is just kind of an initial beginning look at how, sort of pacing out, looking at accountability and assessment. So we'll see as we go along today if this continues to sort of work with the design. But we're eager to get started on the first part of this with the October look and sort of just laying out again some of those things that we all need to be aware of, the boxes that we have to check along the way. So let's go ahead to the next slide, which is just a separator slide, so you can move on to seven, Joette. Let's just remind ourselves some things we brought up in August when we were giving you a broader look at SB 158, but a couple of things that are linked to the system. We have Senate Bill 158 does change the definition of achievement gap. It compares not group to group, but group to the idea of goal performance. That is something we've used in the system prior, so that is not new to Kentucky schools and districts. It also makes changes to the state indicators. And something that is different in 158, it is an exclusive list. It exclusively lists the indicators. Now, within the indicators, the regulations define the data that you use and how you put those pieces together. So there is room for obviously decisions and direction by the board within those. But the list is, uses that term exclusively for the indicators. It also says that all indicators need to be evaluated both on current year performance, which is status, and then how are you changing from that prior year to current year? And it defines those terms. It also asks that everything be displayed in a dashboard, both the overall status and the change. And this is quite connected to the California model, so it's very similar to what California has used. And there are some differences in the Kentucky legislation, but it's quite similar. So that, to sort of just get us started, was a reminder of some things we've talked about in the past with you and the timeline. Now, what we'd like to do is turn the attention to just a very quick overview of some of the federal requirements that are part of every Student Succeeds Act around the accountability work. And so again, we're very happy to have our long-term partner, Dr. Brian Gong, working with us and the information that he brings from the work at the Center for Assessment. So Brian, I think you are on. If you're able to, I'm not sure if you're able to open your calendar, and Mike, we'll turn these slides over to you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Good morning. We can go to the next slide. As Rhonda mentioned, I'm working at a group called the Center for Assessment. We currently are working with about 35 states on assessment and accountability things. I'm not working with every one of those, but because of our group experience, we're able to see what's happening either directly in many, many of the states and indirectly in all of the states. And so it gives us an opportunity to both know what's going on and also be able to learn the good ideas that are happening across the states. And we hope that that will serve Kentucky well as you move forward in implementing Senate Bill 158 and devising your new accountability system. The requirements at the federal level are embodied in a reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, or ESEA. ESEA was originally signed into law in 1965. It was aimed, Title I is the most famous part of it, which is aimed to ensure educational opportunities by providing financial assistance to states, districts, and schools for, primarily for students who are in low-income families and to help ensure that all children be challenging academic state standards. ESEA has been reauthorized six times. The two most recent ones are No Child Left Behind, which many people have heard of, and then the most recent one is the Every Student Succeeds Act. Next slide, please. I, ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, does specify a number of things regarding accountability. And one is that it says states must do certain things, and then it sets up a process for approval. So the U.S. Department of Ed must approve state plans and ensure that they're meeting the federal requirements. Among those federal requirements is that the state must, in its accountability system, have at least four academic indicators. Those include proficiency on state tests. State tests in ESSA are focused on reading or English, language arts, and math. It also has to include for English learner students, progress towards English language proficiency. A third one is another academic indicator. Many states include in that other content areas such as science, or if they're measuring growth or change, and then graduation rate for high schools. In addition, ESSA added a fifth, what's called a fifth indicator, which is a measure of school quality and student success. And that was broadly defined and left up the states to determine what that should be. Some states are doing surveys of school climate and safety, some are doing a variety of other things, student engagement, measures of student engagement, such as chronic absenteeism or other things. There's a wide range of things that have been proposed and approved under that fifth measure of school quality and student success. In terms of the, each of these measures, the federal law requires that at least 95% of the students overall be, participate in them, and that's true by subgroups as well, so student groups, which are federally defined, such as racial, ethnic groups, students who are economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities. Next slide, please. In addition, the law continues the requirement that was in the previous authorization that there's both, that there's reporting disaggregated by student groups, that every measure must be disaggregatable and reported in a disaggregated fashion. The law also requires that states establish ambitious long-term goals with measures of progress. Those should be reported, is required that those be, that progress for those long-term goals be reported. The law does not require that it be a part of the function for making accountability determination. Because there are multiple measures, states have to determine how to weight those or count those or combine them together. The law is silent on, it leaves up to the states what the specific weighting should be, but it does say that the school quality or student success measure must count less, much less than the other, than the other ones. They didn't, Congress didn't want that fifth measure to be able to outweigh the other traditional measures. Perhaps what people focus on most in accountability, the law requires that each year, states must meaningfully differentiate, that is, report, and the reports must separate schools into different performance categories. So it can't be that everyone is all in one category. And that student groups must also be reported on those. In addition, not every year, but as a schedule set up to the state, the state must also identify low-performing schools for what the law calls support and improvement. So I think you're considering the reg now that talks about school, how to identify schools for comprehensive support and improvement, targeted support and improvement, and additional target support and improvement. And lastly, the law requires reporting functions with an emphasis on disaggregated and also added some requirements that weren't included in the last one. Review the next slide, we'll just quickly review those reporting. So these are the reporting requirements. The other ones were accountability, they're closely related. Reporting, five indicators must be reported. They're the same ones that we mentioned before. Next slide. The state must report at least three levels of performance for each indicator, and the state has to define how to combine those to produce an indicator result, because some of the indicators have multiple measures. So for example, the academic performance has reading and math. The state has to determine how to combine those in order to come up with a, an overall performance for academic performance for those multiple measures. And then finally, the state has to report those annually by school and also by student group. That's a quick overview of the federal requirements. We'll turn back to, I think, comparison between the state and the federal requirements now.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us this morning in the introduction to the accountability system. In this next piece, we're going to discuss the comparison of Senate Bill 158 requirements to the prior accountability system, and also then look at the alignment of the ESSA statute to the Senate Bill 158 regulation or the bill. So if we look at the last system, it was reported in 2019. That was the last time we had accountability, and it was presented about this time last year. Senate Bill 158 does make significant changes, but there... Senate Bill 158 does make significant changes, but there are a good number of parallels to the prior system. So Mr. Gong just talked about the indicators. Well, in Kentucky, we have specific name and terminology for the indicators that meet those federal buckets, if you will. The previous system, we called proficiency in reading and math that meets that academic achievement indicator, we called it proficiency. Senate Bill 158 brings about different terminology for that indicator, which is the state assessment results for reading and math. The other academic indicator for ESSA was met in the previous system by a separate academic indicator for science, social studies, and writing. We'll continue to meet that indicator with ESSA with our assessments in our other areas, such as science. In the previous system, in the prior system, we reported growth. It was an indicator in and of itself. With the changes of 158, it does remove growth because the list of indicators in Senate Bill 158 is exclusive, and it did not include growth. So where growth previously had included in it English language proficiency and the progress toward achieving proficiency for our English learners, Senate Bill 158 elevated that as an indicator in and of itself, where previously it had been at elementary and middle school in growth, and then included at high school as part of transition readiness, English language proficiency and the progress toward that for English learners will be an individual indicator in and of itself. Senate Bill 158 continued with a quality of school climate and safety indicator, and the transition readiness indicator is going to use a little bit different terminology and make some tweaks to the options students have to demonstrate readiness in that, because, again, we have that word exclusively in the bill, and with that word exclusively, it limits the amount of offerings that the students will be able to have to demonstrate now post-secondary readiness. And then, of course, the graduation rate will continue unchanged. Senate Bill 158 also removed the achievement gap from accountability. In the previous system, we had achievement gap influence the star rating, possibly by reducing the rating by one star. In Senate Bill 158, the achievement gap would become a reporting category and not included in accountability or an impact on any type of rating that the school would have. Next slide, please. So let's look at each of those big buckets that ESEA requires and how that aligns to Senate Bill 158. For the academic achievement indicator, it's measured by proficiency on annual statewide reading and math test. Senate Bill 158 requires that those requirements of reading and math scores to be included in accountability. So it aligns very nicely. Next slide. For the other academic indicator, we can see that ESEA allows the states a little bit of flexibility here. For elementary and middle schools, the state could choose to include growth or another valid statewide academic indicator. Kentucky's statute, the Senate Bill 158, requires a science, writing, which will include on-demand writing as well as editing mechanics and social studies, to be included in accountability. So Senate Bill 158 will align with the ESEA with this other valid measure, and we would use at least one of those other assessment scores. Next slide. As we mentioned, English language proficiency indicator will be used in each level, elementary, middle, and high, as required by ESEA. If there was a slight tweak to the language or a little bit of tweak to the implementation of Senate Bill 158, it would be on this measure. Where Senate Bill 158 requires both status and change within each of the indicators, status being the performance of the current year, and the change being from one year to the next comparison, ESEA requires that an individual student score to be included in this progress toward individuals meeting English language proficiency. In discussions with both federal representatives as well as state representatives, we do have a solution in providing and meeting both the intent of ESEA as well as Senate Bill 158.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Would you mind going back to Slide 16 for just a second?
Yes, please.
So on the issue of science, writing, and social studies, did you say that we would identify one of those to meet the ESEA requirement? Are we talking about an aggregate of those?
Yes. So with, in the last negotiation period of our ESSA state plan, what each state has to do is they have to demonstrate to the U.S. government, the U.S. Department of Education, that we are meeting the expectations of ESEA. During that negotiation, we proposed to include both science, writing, as well as social studies in this indicator of other academic indicator. Since the department does not mandate writing or social studies to be given nationally, they do not include those two subject areas as a fulfillment of that requirement. So what we'll do is we will use the assessment scores in science to meet this other academic indicator in grades four and seven to meet the ESEA requirements. We'll include the writing as well as the social studies in accountability. That will be included in the school quality student success measure as we report to the federal government our alignment to the ESEA requirements.
All right. Thank you. I just needed to get my mind around that.
Okay, great. Yes. So it'll be, all of those will be in the accountability system. We'll talk about them for the purposes of accountability as one, so that when we're talking about, for instance, weights, we'll go into that. We'll weight those together. We'll demonstrate to the U.S. Department of Education, we are including this other academic indicator by using those science scores.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Joette, if you'll move to the next one, please. Slide 18. So the final indicator as required by ESEA, other than graduation rate, is the school quality student success. And this has another bit of flexibility for states. So states may develop indicators within the quality and student success indicator that annually allows for measurable differences between schools. So in Kentucky, what we're planning to use is the post-secondary readiness for students who are in high school to meet one of the types of readiness, whether it is academic or career, and also the quality of school climate and safety. So those two will be used to fulfill the requirement of ESEA in our accountability system. So again, there are flexibilities given from within ESEA. The state, Senate Bill 158, further defines our requirements to fulfill that piece of legislation. Next slide. So as we've worked through this, we know that there are discussions that you want to have, and the next step that we want to have is to get a good conversation around your long-term aspirations on the accountability system. So, Joette, if you'll go to the next slide. So the next step toward meeting your goals for an accountability system and putting a regulation in place that will meet those goals is to have a study session. As Rhonda mentioned, it will be scheduled soon with each of you to have that initial discussion and guidance on the amendments to that regulation. So with that, with the changes of Senate Bill 158, there must be changes to the accountability system, and this is a perfect time for your discussions and meeting your goals and aspirations toward that accountability system. After that initial working session, then we'll come back, including your guidance and direction, into a draft of a regulation for the first read in December. After December, if there's any changes, we'll bring back a second draft to the board for a second read in February. After that second read in February, the regulation will be put out publicly for comment. So we will take both written and oral comments during that 60-day period between March and April, and then we'll collect all of those comments and put them into what's called a statement of consideration. And a statement of consideration is a document the department will put together that will summarize all of the public comments. We'll bring it back to the board in June for consideration, so that you can have input and hear public comments on that proposed regulation. At that point in June, we'll make any tweaks if needed to the regulation and then file it with the LRC, move into the legislative committees that will hear the regulation, and then hopefully have a final regulation in place by this time next year. So that's the end of our presentation. That concludes. I think we have one more slide, possibly for questions, and to gather your input and see if there are discussions and topics that you would like to hear and have further discussed at your working session.
Jennifer, this is Patrice McCrery. I just have a question about the EL sections. What assessment is going to be used to collect that data?
We have been a longstanding member of the WEADA Consortium, and the WEADA Consortium is a collection of states that come together and create an English language proficiency assessment. It includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and we plan to continue that assessment. It's called access. Access is offered both for regular and an alternate access for our students who are English learners with severe cognitive disabilities. So we'll use access and alternate access.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if that would continue. And as a follow-up to that, since the accountability is going to be set up in a different way to show the EL population more strongly, how does the weight work out on all of those areas when there is a district that does not have a substantial EL?
Well, that is a really good question, one that we are going to pose to you when we get to the working session, because there is a good bit of variation between our districts and their proportion and their population, especially around ELs. We have concentrated areas in the state that have a larger number of EL students, and we have other areas that have fewer. So we are looking toward the board, and we have some options for you to discuss during that working session on a couple of different approaches that we could take, and it would be a good point of discussion in November.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more quick, quick question, if you don't mind. How much has SCAC been pulled into this? Are they actively meeting, walking through the process of this? And are those meetings available to you?
Absolutely. Our SCAC, which is our School Curriculum Assessment and Accountability Council, they are actively involved. We had a meeting in September. I want to say it was September 17th, and they were introduced to the changes that were required as Senate Bill 158. So they are up to date on where we are with the regulation, what the steps that we're taking with the board to get there, as well as they were provided a lot of good discussion on some of those pieces that we're going to bring to you for discussion. Our next meeting is in November, so it really works out quite well with their input, because we're hoping that we'll have the working session with you prior to their meeting, so that we can then provide them an overview of the discussion at the working session with them, and then bring back to you their feedback in December for the first read.
Thank you. And as the former chair of SCAC, I would just go on record to say it's the most unfortunate acronym for a committee I can think of. So, Rhonda, you may recall, and Brian too, this is a little bit of a launch from Patrice's question, but also it makes me think of where we are in this point in time and tracks one, two, and three. But as I recall, it was 98 to 2000 or 2002 to 2004, when Ken was still Associate Commissioner, we had a bridge model where we got ourselves from one model to the next in a pretty deliberate and intentional way. And I just wonder if something like that might be practical for us as we think about how we're going to manage our track one, two, and three as a board, laying out some groundwork that gets us from one place on the bridge to the next, perhaps.
And you are remembering that correctly, Lou. We refer to it as an interim accountability system. I think it was the terminology we used, and I know Brian is familiar with it. So I think that's something we can take back and come back to you with a little conversation around that. I think during that interim process, I'm not sure we had something equivalent of 158 in place. So I think we just need to have some discussion about how to make that bridge happen, because obviously, as you make changes to accountability and to assessment, there is a need to help the change occur at that local level, where that's where the, that intense work with students. I did want to add, Patrice, one of the other things that you'll see us bring back to you, I know it's been a conversation for you in the past, we want to make sure we very deliberately deal with that federal flexibility of where, when students enter late in age, when they're older and coming in as an English learner, when they've had interrupted schooling, there are some flexibilities that allow more time for them to achieve. So we want to make sure that that is very deliberately in the regulation moving forward. So we want to bring that for your consideration as well.
Thank you. We look forward to that conversation, Rhonda. There's a big difference between a refugee student who
That's right.
is literate in her first language and the amount of time it takes for her to become literate in English. So I think that's an important part of the conversation as well. Board members, what other questions might you have for Dr. Gong, or for Rhonda, or for Jennifer? Hearing, I'm sure that we need to schedule a work session. Jennifer and I have been sidebar texting about the possibility of doing that sometime in November, so early November.
Chairman Young, I have a question. And first of all, Rhonda, great, great summary there of the differences there moving forward. Because that's one of the things that I had in my notes. So that was a very good presentation of that. The question I have is really not as much on that right there, is I know that I was reading that the release of test scores for last year, or the schools are going through that now. But the fact that we, that the test situation was waived last year, what exactly is going to be coming out there? And that also then leads me to what are we going to be doing in the spring? I know you have the three tracks that are laid out very well, but what?
Sure.
I know that some schools were hoping for relief of not having to do the testing like there, and I know the federal said one thing that they weren't giving waiver. So if you could give us a brief update on that. So, if you could give us a brief update on that. I know that that's on a lot of people's minds out there.
Absolutely. I'll start, and then Jennifer, Brian, others, please chime in. Kevin's on the line as well, who works strongly with the data. To start with, what will schools be receiving? Well, we'll start there. We only have a very small amount of testing that was able to be accomplished before everything shut down. So, student, schools will receive their tests. We've just been talking about the ACCESS test results for our English language learners. That testing was completed before schools closed due to COVID. So, that's a full data set. So, that will be coming out to schools. Graduation rate information, that will be available. And really, that is where the full sets are. Now, most of our students were tested with the ACT in the spring, at the first testing in March. But we did have some districts and schools that were not able to test in March. Harrison County, for example, is already closed. We have made arrangements with ACT to have testing this fall, and a number of students have completed that. But we don't have a complete full data set yet. So, we tend not to post data until we have a set that's complete. And we do have some missing things from our alternate assessment program. So, Jennifer, let me pause there for you to correct anything that I may have gotten wrong from your and Kevin's great work on this.
Nothing wrong there, Rhonda. I'll just add too, a little bit. So, as Rhonda mentioned, we'll have ACCESS as well as alternate access scores included in the school report card. Also, the graduation rate, both four- and five-year and combined rates. We'll also have long-term goals and measures of interim progress. Those have been shared with districts previously, and there will be some nice graphics to those, as well as trends. Those are two new pieces that are going to be displayed in the school report card. That's from the Office of Assessment and Accountability. But there are also a number of other data points that are in the school report card that include safety, as well as the school profile report and other pieces of information there. So, the data from the Assessment and Accountability is going to be limited because of the waiver of assessment and accountability. But there are also other pieces of the card.
So, that sort of handles what's coming just right around the corner, you know, getting ready for that release. Obviously, Tony's work with Communications heavily involved with that. David Couch works also with the school report card. Now, let's talk about the spring. You're correct, Dr. Poe, in that we did receive, chiefs received a letter from Dr. Betsy DeVos indicating that not to expect blanket waivers for assessment and accountability as we have had prior. There was a, I think, direction, my read is that you need to move forward getting ready for a spring assessment. Now, that being said, there was a little bit of conversation in the letter around where there are some flexibilities that districts could use, could assessment look different? I will tell you, we have a call with USED. I think it's scheduled for next week to talk about what did that letter really mean? Because we need to get a sense of how, what did it mean? How does it apply for Kentucky? There seemed to be a bit more opening around accountability and how accountability is used. Now, so, there, we are beginning to work with our prime vendor, as well as we have other vendors that support that work, just on some options and plans for how could we potentially test in the spring? Everything from moving forward sort of as we were planning. You know, we have new standards that have come into our work and testing of those new standards. But we also want to make sure that we are attentive to what might be possible federally. But it seems to be a little more flexibility possibly for accountability than for not, and maybe administering something slightly different. But I think the expectation at this point is that you need to administer something in the spring. Now, I'm going to pause there and let Brian, who has a much more national perspective on this, to see if he has something to maybe add to that. Because again, I think at this point, Dr. Poe, we're really trying to work through some options and plans. And part of that is that call with USED to say, what did you really mean in that letter? How much flexibility is there for states?
Could I ask a question, Lou?
Yes, please, Mr. Bowling, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Gong.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know if this question has already been asked, because I did have to remove myself for a few minutes. But how many, because we've got Fort Campbell and the other fort in Kentucky? Yeah. How many language learning students are there out there approximately? I don't, I know you can't answer to the exact amount, but approximately, how many are out there? And the reason I ask that question is that my mother was full German, and I spoke German before I spoke English. Okay? So, I had to come into the school system later on and learn the English language after I'd already learned German. So, that's why this is a very important subject to me.
Sure. With a couple of different things, Mr. Bowling. The schools that are on the basis, the Fort Knox and Fort Campbell in Kentucky are actually part of the Department of Defense Schools. So, they do not participate in Kentucky's public education system. They have their own international system. Now, that being said, though, you describe with your experience of English was not your first language when you were a small child. And that is part of one of the survey questions that we ask of all students that enroll in Kentucky Public Schools to say, are you potentially an English language learner? There are four home survey questions that help us identify when a student needs to be screened for potentially testing for English language learners. Now, this is a population that has grown significantly in Kentucky from where we were 20 years ago. I'm not sure off the top of my head, Jennifer, do you remember, are we in like the, Kevin may know this, I think we have between 25 and 30,000 students. Am I remembering that close at all? And I don't know if Kevin is able to add that with the number that are English learners in Kentucky.
Come on, Kevin. Come on, Kevin.
I was trying to get my guys to give me the exact count. I'm thinking it's more like 50,000, but the number's grown.
It's grown substantially over the past five years.
Yeah. So, around 50,000, we think. And we can obviously get you exact numbers, and we can also give you a sense as we talk about this particular indicator, you know, what the variety of sizes are. Because as Patrice, I think your comment was, we have some districts that might have 20 students. You have others that have hundreds of students that are English language learners. And many times, it has to do with factories that might be in the community, farming enterprise. You know, it's been a growing population in Shelby County with horse farms and also in Fayette. So, that's something we can bring back details for that kind of data as we talk about how to best demonstrate and include that indicator, both federally and state required. So, I think we were going to turn, Chair Lou, to Brian for a few comments.
Yes, please.
Sure. I think the question was, what should the state be telling districts and schools so they can prepare about the federal requirements for assessment and accountability in Spring 21? The U.S. Department of Education, most recently through the Secretary of Education, the Boston letter, has made it clear that the U.S. Department of Ed does not want to call off assessment or accountability early in the school year. They want to wait and see what happens. So, they're telling states that states should prepare to go ahead with both assessment and possibly accountability in Spring of 21. However, there was a recent convening of all 50 states under the sponsorship of the Council of Chief State School Officers, and they've identified a number of issues that every state is wrestling with. States differ in how much COVID is affecting them. But states in general are saying, are students back in school in person? And if they aren't, how are you going to test them? And most states are saying, if the students aren't in school, we don't have very many good options to get valid test scores. So, states are saying, are already telling the U.S. Department of Ed, if we can't get valid test scores, we're going to ask for a waiver because we can't carry on assessment or accountability if we don't have the conditions for having fair and valid testing. So, I think that message is going out. I think the response coming back from the U.S. Department of Ed is, that's fine. October's too early to tell whether students will be able to test in the spring. So, I think they're going to wait. My personal opinion is it'll be after the election to see what happens.
All right, thank you. If you have questions, let's take a few more minutes to wrap this up. I would be happy to make sure, Rhonda, to say publicly that I would be one person in favor of affording the greatest flexibility to the extent that we possibly can to our schools and teachers, students, and families, given that this is equally as unusual a school year as 2019-20 was. So, hopefully, we work that out.
You would be preaching to the choir.
I know. I have a keen knack for the obvious.
I do want to mention, Chair Young, we were listening again to much of your conversation yesterday. And it sounded like there was some interest in learning a little bit more about maybe opportunity-to-learn type of data. I understand there was some good conversation about accountability, and the issue of community came up, the issue of opportunity for students came up. So, I assume that that is something, as we just talk about accountability, you would be interested in knowing and discussing in more detail.
Certainly. Equity, access, continuity of learning, all of those things I think would be very interesting to us. And Brian, I know that this is always a challenge to think about in terms of validity and reliability, but it would be interesting in our conversation to think about what Virginia has done around the profile of a Virginia graduate and some of those big ideas to include academic performance as well as some larger skills and dispositional kinds of considerations for us as a state. And this, again, we're moving into our track three in the conversation. I'm anxious to have that conversation too, so.
Okay.
Chairman Young, this is Lee.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question. What was the burning issue that caused the legislators to want to do 158? Or what was their drive? Just as we have that in our mind as we think about how we position this. And I agree, you've done an excellent job of summarizing the differences, but I didn't track all that before I had this position. So, can you give us some indication?
We have, maybe she could speak to that for someone.
Oh, Tracy. Excellent.
Yes, great.
Hello and good morning. Yes, we've had a lot of activity with the legislature around accountability and assessment since December of 2015, when ESSA was passed. I think part of the reaction with Senate Bill 158 is truly a reaction to the previous board's position on several of the accountability and assessment pieces. And I think that the Senate in particular wanted to see some of those changes that were initially discussed under Dr. Pruitt to move forward, and they had not been completely embraced by the previous board. So, I think that part of Senate Bill 158 is a reaction to where things didn't land with the previous board and where they wanted to see some things go. Also, I think that Senate Bill 158 is very prescriptive. It's taken a little bit of authority away from the state board to put things into place because of non-reaction by the state board on some of those pieces that the senators were most interested in. So, I think we've got a little work to probably do to follow back up with the legislature about pieces that may or may not work well as we move forward. We've had some discussions with them about implementation issues and concerns that we have with moving forward. We had a lot of those discussions, obviously, during the session about what was going on with 158 and where things could possibly land. There's still a lot of questions that they are interested in to see how that goes. We're going to try to keep them as involved as possible as we move forward, just so that they'll understand some of the complications and potential issues that we might need to go back to the legislature and address as you all consider what you want to see happen with this going forward.
Excellent. Very helpful, Tracy. That tracks with my understanding, too. Thank you. All right. Well, an important and very timely discussion for our review this morning. So, many thanks to Rhonda, to Jennifer, to Kevin, to Brian, and the team. And thanks, board. We're getting really into the belly of the beast in these conversations. But we will work with Rhonda and the team to schedule working session time, either at the committee level or the full board level, soon so that we can hopefully fulfill that fairly aggressive regulatory timeline that the team has put forward for our consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate your time today. You're good.
Amanda Ellis had her hand up. I don't know if she wanted to be recognized.
Thank you.
No, no, that's great. Thank you. No problem. I just, I think you kind of just said it, Chair Young. I think there's some confusion because there is so much information and so much unknown. You know, our emails are blowing up saying they're getting rid of GAAP, they're getting rid of. This is just the beginning of the work to revise and fulfill federal and state law, and this is just the beginning conversation. I just want to clarify and that what, just repeat what next steps would be. I think there's a lot of confusion for folks who are watching the board. So, I just know my email was blowing up, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
Sir, I'm glad. Thank you very much. We live in real time anymore. So, thank you. That's very helpful, too. And I'm glad that we're moving forward with a goal that talks about thoughtful implementation of Senate Bill 158, and that's certainly the challenge ahead of us as we both comply and dream big about the future. So, thank you.
We look forward to the conversation.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, I think we're early on the next item on our agenda. So, perhaps to get us back on track, we could look ahead to item 12. This is the public comment segment. And as you may recall, we did reinstate public comment in a virtual way at the August meeting. We do not have public comment to share today. But just some notes moving forward that this public comment will look certainly slightly different in a virtual environment than it does when we meet in person. But we did want to afford that opportunity for the general public to provide us with information and feedback about matters that are listed on any board agenda. So, we will keep that going forward, and perhaps we'll have some public comment to share at the December meeting. The next item on our agenda is item 13, approval of the consent agenda. So, just as a reminder, by using the consent agenda, we allow the board to approve items as a group in one action, as opposed to hearing each individual agenda item. This is an efficiency technique that many boards avail themselves of in order to deal with items that are generally non-controversial and more routine in nature. So, in the portal and on the agenda for today, you see the following 10 items that have been bundled together for your consideration in action consent. Before we move forward to consider a motion for consent, does any board member have an item that you wish to remove from consent for separate consideration, either today or at a future time?
Lou?
Yes, sir.
I don't have that in front of me right now. But I did note that there's going to be a consideration on the Pineville Independent School Board and the Bell County School Board.
Yes, sir.
And as you know from past meetings, I have recused myself from being involved in those in any way.
Okay.
Because those are both county schools in my county. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's not part of the consent agenda.
You're correct. It is not. That's a later item, and I'll make sure that we note that you've recused yourself from that discussion when we get there this afternoon. Thank you.
I appreciate it very much.
Certainly. Hearing no request to move items from the consent agenda. As I noted, you received consent, you received the consent via full agenda in advance, and hopefully have had time. in advance and hopefully have had time to review that. So at this point, um, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. Do I have such a motion?
This is Lee. I so mean.
Thank you. Have a motion from Dr. Todd, and I believe I have a second from Mrs. McCray. Thank you so much. Any, uh, further discussion on items of consent? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat.
Claire Bat. I vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling.
Mike Bowling votes yes.
Elvis Johnson.
Elvis Johnson votes yes.
Cody Johnson.
This is Cody Johnson. I vote yes.
Patrice McCray.
This is Patrice McCray. I vote yes.
Randy Poe.
This is Randy Poe. I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson.
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
This is Lee Todd, and I vote yes.
And Lou Young.
This is Lou Young, and my vote is yes.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda, uh, regards waive, action to waive certain Board of Education regulatory requirements in response to COVID-19. And we have one such item before us today, and this would be action to approve the request to waive section 22G of 704 KAR 3 colon 370. Um, with us, this is the Kentucky Framework for Personnel Evaluation. And with us today to, um, discuss this waiver and, uh, share their recommendation are, uh, KDE Associate Commissioner Rob Akers and KDE Division Director Todd Davis.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I hope you're doing well. It's nice to see everybody. Um, uh, Director Davis couldn't be with us today. They had a, a, a death in the family. And so, um, I told him I would, I would speak for him. And hopefully any errors I make are not attributed to him. But we, we come to the board today and ask for, uh, a waiver of 704 KAR 3370 specifically around the 30-day notice of, uh, of training for the Certified Evaluation Plan for local districts. And we asked this just simply because of the COVID-related challenges to in-person, uh, resumption of, of class and teachers who are working remotely. The, that 30 days has probably been problematic for some of our districts. And we've heard from some of our superintendents, the need for some additional flexibility. Uh, with this, this does not change any of the requirements around evaluation. All it does is allow the, the local districts, uh, a little grace in terms of time should they choose to revise in terms of their timelines or, uh, any of their, um, sources of evidence that they think, uh, need to be amended because of the challenges with COVID.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Rob. Um, board members, do you have any questions about the request for the waiver of that one section as it pertains to the 30 days notice?
Elvis Johnson, I move to, uh, to, uh, approve the, uh, the request.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. We have a motion to approve a waiver of section, uh, 22G of 704 KAR 3 colon 370. Do we have a second?
A second. Randy Poe.
Thank you so much, Dr. Poe. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any, uh, other questions for Associate Commissioner Akers? I would just, uh, thank you, Rob and Todd and the team for, uh, again, looking at whatever flexibility and, uh, Lieutenant Governor Coleman's word, grace we can afford schools as they work through very challenging reopening year. So we have a motion and a second and have engaged in discussion. So Jennifer, if you would, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
This is Joanne Adams. My vote is yes.
Claire Bat.
Claire Bat. I vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
This is Holly Bloodworth. I vote yes.
Mike Bowling.
Mike Bowling votes yes.
Elvis Johnson.
This is Elvis Johnson. I vote yes.
Patrice McCray.
This is Patrice McCray, and I vote yes.
Cody Johnson.
Cody Johnson, and I vote yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe. I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson.
This is Sharon Robinson. I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
This is Lee Todd, and I vote yes.
And Lou Young.
This is Lou Young, and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Uh, and Jennifer, I've been trying to, uh, do double duty and watch. I don't believe our guest for the next item on the agenda is here yet. Am I right?
That is correct. He has not arrived yet.
Okay. So I, it's our, my understanding that we're expecting him, uh, around 11:45. And I don't think our, our, after, uh, uh, our item 15 guests are ready yet. So I would recommend, Jennifer, try not to freak out, that we take a 10-minute recess. Don't get used to this. I can't always promise it. But let's take a 10-minute recess, then we'll return, um, to item, um, 10 on our agenda, uh, before we break for lunch. Thank you so much. Um, welcome back, Board. And we are now on item 10, presentation of the Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnership. We are delighted that our award recipient is able to join us now in this team's session. The Joseph W. Kelly, excuse me, sorry, let me start over. Joseph, Joseph W. Kelly served as a member of the Kentucky Board of Education from 1989 until 1998, and during that time provided exceptional leadership as its chair for seven years. A respected businessman, business leader and education advocate, Kelly knew firsthand the critical role the business community plays in supporting Kentucky's public education system. His career exemplifies the significant contributions that members of the business community are making in support of Kentucky students. This award is given in the fall of each year to a Kentucky businessperson or business, or a business who has partnered with a public school or district to provide outstanding leadership that promotes school improvement and student success. The 2020 recipient of the Kelly Award for Business and Education Partnership is President and CEO of GE Appliances, Mr. Kevin Nolan. And you can see Kevin there in one of our, um, little Brady Bunch screens. Mr. Kevin Nolan. Thank you for being here. Under Mr. Nolan's leadership, GEA formed a partnership with Jefferson County Public Schools to enhance educational opportunities for some of the districts traditionally underserved students. Those partnerships include joining the, the Academies of Louisville Initiative at DOS High School, sponsoring the district's Summer Backpack League, and funding the State of the, of the Art Steam Lab at the new Grace M. Jones Academy of Excellence. In addition, as part of GEA's Fall Community Project, staff completed several renovation and beautification projects at JCPS schools in West Louisville. GEA also donated dozens of appliances to JCPS schools to provide laundry services for students, to teach life skills for specifically abled students. Finally, although I could continue to list exceptional accomplishments, GEA provides art education programs to JCPS students through its Fund for the Arts Foundation, AMPED, and the Boys and Girls Club. For all of these reasons and many more, the board is pleased to recognize Kevin Nolan as this year's 2020 recipient of the Kelly Award. We would also like to express our sincere appreciation for your partnership with the Jefferson County Public Schools, which is focused on equity, inclusion, and diversity. So, Mr. Nolan, thank you for joining us today. Thank you, um, to support Jefferson County Schools, and congratulations.
Uh, they, thank you so much. It's, uh, it's truly an honor, and it's an honor to work for a company like, uh, GE Appliances. Uh, that, education has always been a part of our culture. You know, personally being a son of two, uh, teachers, uh, education, I think I've always known the importance of public education. I want to thank all of you for what you do. Um, it's so important that people do give back and take part in, in the education of our kids. It's what makes our community. So it, it again runs deep throughout GE Appliances. Um, our partnership with the public schools has been important. It's our pipeline. It's our lifeblood. Um, you know, we are proud to call Kentucky our home, our headquarters, and it's where we need to attract and we need to gain talent. And we know the one thing people always look at is what are the, what are the schools that I could send my kids to? So it's a, it's a huge part of our state. It's a huge importance for, uh, for all of us. And I want to thank you for everything that you do and how you contribute every day compared to the small amount that I think we do at, uh, GE Appliances.
Well, thank you so much and congratulations. Mom and Dad as schoolteachers explains it all. When we read your nomination, we were so blown away, uh, by the level of commitment that you have demonstrated as an individual business leader and certainly for GE Appliances, uh, as, as a corporation. So congratulations. And we have on our screen now a picture of you with the handsome Kelly Award. So congratulations, Mr. Nolan, and thank you so much. Board members, if anyone has anything you'd like to add, feel free to.
Madam Chair, briefly, I'd just like to mention that I've received word that, uh, Dr. Polio from Jefferson County Public Schools and, uh, Dr. Bendapudi from the University of Louisville are also watching on live stream, just to acknowledge and recognize, um, uh, Kevin Nolan, your accomplishment here today. So you have great support in the community as well as across the state.
Excellent. Very fitting. And for the partners to be there supporting one another, outstanding. Thank you so much.
Chair Young.
Yes, please, Patrice.
Patrice McCray. As a part of the awards committee and having the opportunity to see the application that came through, um, I just want to say a special thank you for being such a champion of education, but more importantly, a champion for the future of our children and the, in the Commonwealth. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We wish we could be there in person to shake your hand. Um, so in another, another time and place. Thank you so much, Mr. Nolan.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Everyone take care.
Enjoy the rest of your day. And many thanks to Mrs. McCray and the awards committee for your continued, um, uh, faithful abiding to the awards, uh, details and making sure that we're able to recognize these outstanding folks. So, Board members, as we take a look at the next leg on our agenda, since we've had a bit of a comfort break, we do have, um, our next round of guests ready to present. So, um, with your permission, I'll go ahead and turn to item 15A. This is under a series of review items, and the first of which is an update on our state assisted district. And, um, Dr. Kelly Foster, Associate Commissioner, is with us along with the superintendents from Breathitt and Menifee County Schools. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Foster.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, thank you for having us on this morning. We're moving right along. I sent a, a, a 911 or a 411 or an alert text to my superintendent. So we worked it out. Uh, so we have a superintendent, uh, Philip Watts from Breathitt County with us today, as well as Superintendent, uh, Tim Spencer from Menifee County. So we will start with Breathitt. Um, and Philip, if you were with us, if you could turn your camera on and unmute and give us a little bit of an update about what's going on in Breathitt County Schools.
Well, I would first like to thank Board Chair Young and the board for having us here today. Uh, also look forward to working with Commissioner Glass. Uh, and I, if I got anything at all to say, I'd just really like to thank Doc, Dr. Foster and her team for all the support they've provided for Breathitt and for all across the state. Uh, and then I'd have to, if I, I, I really need to thank, uh, Kevin Brown for his leadership, uh, here recently, and really appreciate all the guidance documents that him and Dr. Foster and the, the different teams have been able to send down to the schools for us to go by. So thank you. Uh, I, I need to be quick. I got so much to talk about, and I, and I'll share this real quick. Your all's time is valuable. I had to hang up on the Director of the Local Health Department to jump on here. So I gotta call her back just as soon as we get off. But we're off to a good start on our reentry. We went with a real small model, uh, being conservative. Uh, we started on September the 28th. Uh, we had a really good week last week. We got kids in groups. We've got, uh, a Monday and Tuesday group and a Thursday, Friday group. Uh, we're averaging about 25% a day. So we've been excited with that. Uh, Wednesday is our, um, online day, uh, for everyone. And it's also a day that we deliver, um, not deliver, but, uh, get together and have mealbox, mealbox pickups, which has exceeded around a thousand, which we're excited about that. Uh, really proud of our local board. They've been really supportive. Uh, we've had to have a lot of meetings, a lot of different reentry plans, a lot of different approvals, uh, uh, working with the local health department, uh, just trying to figure out what to do during this pandemic. So couldn't, uh, we couldn't be off to a good start without them. Uh, we've kind of took the model, you know, the educated feed and support, and, uh, that's kind of went down to all my task force teams, and all the work we've done has been centered around that. Uh, couldn't say enough out of the students and staff for the social distancing that they're, they have been exhibiting the last few days. Uh, the mask, the kids have been doing it, um, without any, um, just a little encouragement. That's it. The kids have been awesome. The students have been. So we're excited about that. We've got, uh, very thankful that the board over the last couple of years with the guidance of KDE, we've bought into a lot of evidence-based strategies and practices, and we've got a lot of digital resources. And boy, it came to bat at this time of year for us. So we're excited. Uh, we're trying to just align all of that. Uh, we are blessed. Uh, we have been able to scrape, uh, the bottom of the barrel and get devices in all of our kids' hands from K through 12. So, uh, just a big shout out there. Uh, facilities, we have had a small Coliseum fire in our gymnasium. Uh, we've been working with their insurance company on that. That's become a large project. Uh, we have, uh, completed our Sebastian Elementary School renovation. That used to be Sebastian Middle School. Uh, and then we, the high school is now 712. Uh, our largest elementary has moved into Sebastian Elementary School. Um, and now we're looking at demo in one of our, um, uh, older elementary schools, LBJ. And we are looking at, hopefully, uh, we're real far along in the process of looking at building a new elementary. So I've got to give a shout out to Greg Dunbar and all his department and all the work we did in our district facility planning and our local community for supporting some really tough, uh, tax initiatives. Uh, financially, um, Robin Kenny and her office, they've been great to work with. We've got a great finance officer. We've seen her contingency grow from 300,000 to last year between 2.6 and 2.7 million. Uh, really proud of that. Uh, our deltas, you know, just the pandemic and the learning gaps, we're, we've got to address the social emotional wellbeing, starting to see that, and then just the finances that we could be facing. So, uh, any questions?
Board members, any question for Superintendent Watts?
Yes, um, thank you for joining us, Superintendent Watts. What, would you say another sentence about the social emotional learning, uh, issues that you're facing?
I don't know exactly for sure if we know how to maybe handle all of those. Uh, you know, not being able to see the kids' faces, not being able to personally see all the kids individually, uh, like a normal day. I will say I'm really proud of our staff. We are trying to create a synchronous school day, which is normal, whether you're at home or whether you're in person. Uh, I just feel like, um, we're going to have to slow down a little bit and work with our counselors. We do have some support staff through Kentucky River Community Care, our guidance counselors, and, and we got to make sure we're addressing some of these social emotional needs. I know, me personally, it's probably impacting each and every family. I've got small children. Uh, we just have to be careful, uh, going forward, uh, trying to get back to normal, but also, you know, balancing academics along with the social emotional side.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for being with us, Superintendent Watson. Please apologize to your public health director.
Yes, we don't want to be on bad terms with public health.
They've, they've been awesome, uh, by the way. Thank you.
Excellent.
I will say, as, thank you, Philip. I will say, as we transition from Breathitt to Menifee, um, and I know we've talked about this before, but we do have some new members on the board. You know, both Menifee and Breathitt, uh, while they were under state management, went after the nickel tax, uh, for their facilities, and both were successful with their campaigns. And they are going to see, um, Menifee is a little bit further along on building their new school, and I'm sure, um, TM will speak to that. But Philip has done some work in his district as well. And, and, you know, it's quite amazing, two rural communities. as well. And and, you know, it's quite amazing, two rural communities to make have that campaign and get it through. So kudos to them and their kids for years to come are going to see the benefits of that. So Tim, if you are with us, we will transition to Menifee County's update.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Foster. Thank you, Chairman Young. Always good to see your face again. Of course, I've been a superintendent since '05, so I've been around quite a while, I guess. But anyway, good things happening here in Menifee County. I left the meeting with my administrative team just a few moments ago. Just continue building upon the issues and things that we've learned during state management and really want to brag on my staff. The systems that was developed and the protocols and the processes, they were utilizing those even without me there a few moments ago. They were doing data analysis and and really looking at things to to help guide us through the pandemic and look on things to make improvements as we continue to to work throughout this semester. Started back the week of the 28th within class. We worked on the hybrid model. We had about 30% of our students in last week and within students in grades K through five, and then two groups of high school students of ninth and 12th grade. Had a little setback this week. Menifee County went red this week. So we did have to go to virtual this week. And one of the positives of that is we have a great relationship with the Gateway Area Health Department. They've worked with us throughout the challenges. And hopefully we'll be able to get back to in-class instruction next week. We do have full intentions of going back to in-class instruction with our K5 students the week of the 20th of having all of our K5 back in the building four days a week. And then the six through 12 will be working on a hybrid model of going Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Thursday, with Fridays being utilized for PLC days with our staff members, but also to work on our targeted students to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students there. So far with last week, very good week, you know, face masks were not an issue. We even had students, you know, with with school buses. We had bus monitors on each of the buses. They were doing temperature checks before the students actually got on the buses. We've purchased portable temperature check stations in our buildings. We've been feeding all of our kids, you know, if our kids, even if they're on virtual, we've been doing meal deliveries throughout the county, utilizing our bus drivers, our custodial staff and our cooks. Our SRO, you know, we're very concerned about the social and emotional well being of our kids. But we've been utilizing our SRO in conjunction with the Menifee County Sheriff's Department, actually been doing wellness checks on our kids. He's been going out pretty much on a daily basis and just making checks with those kids. And, you know, when you have a good SRO, building positive relationships within the community, it makes things much easier. Another positive thing that we have done in Menifee is advanced placement courses were not in existence in Menifee County prior to, of course, I was state manager, then became superintendent last year. But we have over 60 kids out of a high school, a population of 300, that are enrolled, non-duplication students enrolled in advanced placement courses. We're also utilizing dual credit programs through Morehead State, Kentucky Christian, and Batesville Community College. So a lot of exciting things there. Our ACT scores last year went up almost 2.5 points. And of course, we're still not satisfied with that. And we're hoping to to get some gains there as we continue throughout this process. One of the things, of course, that's very exciting, and Dr. Foster mentioned a moment ago, was the construction of the new K8 building. Menifee County currently has two elementary buildings within the district. We'll be combining all of our K8 students will be in one facility next year. We're building a 750 capacity K through eight building. Hopefully, that is on track. And it is scheduled to be completed by June of 2021. And, you know, it's very exciting. It's one of the positive things that's occurring within the district. A lot of excitement, a lot of community support by passing that nickel tax, and very supportive of that new school. We're also installing a new security vessel at the high school. We'll start that project next week to where we'll have, we'll be utilizing some Safe Schools dollars in order to make sure that our high school with cameras and and a security vessel with one entry into that building. Another thing is, is I want to commend my special needs director and my entire district staff. All of our ARC's are up to date. We've also been working with our targeted students. We've had them coming in now for about a month, working with our targeted students, ensuring that all those services are being provided for our special needs kids. Some challenges that we faced, of course, is, you know, during the pandemic of just trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of all the kids. But scheduling of the ATC courses, we've been, you know, of course, we utilize Morgan County and Montgomery County. It's not anything that they've done, but just trying to schedule and get our kids there. The helps meet our timeframe. But we're working with that. And those both of those ATCs have worked very diligently with us. The red status, of course, kind of threw us for a loop this week, but but we'll bounce back from that and and we'll continue to move forward with that. But one of the things that I can say positive about going from the spring of 2020, where we were just basically thrown into three days of of getting into the NTI mode, our district had never utilized NTI before. It was just a lot of paper pencil instruction. That is not occurring this this semester at all. For students that have, you know, we've got a few students that are still having connectivity issues, but we're uploading that on a flash drive. Our SRO is taking that out to them. Or we have our teachers taking those out, delivering to our students. But we're not doing any paper pencil right now. It's all online, utilizing Google as our as our learning platform. But we also invest in a school program called School PLP, that is kind of a platform where all the curriculum, all the standards to ensure that we're meeting those for our kids. But the district, I mean, it's daylight and dark difference between NTI and the spring as what it's compared to right now. But a lot of challenges, but I commend our staff, all the way down to cooks, bus drivers, custodians, everyone working together to ensure that we're meeting the needs of Menifee County. Menifee County is a very student centered district now, much better than what it was when we were under state management in 2014. And even though we're state assisted right now, the board have a phenomenal board here. They're pretty much very very student centered and working for to meet the needs of our kids. And, you know, I've got three board members that are running unopposed in November. So that kind of goes to show you as to how things are here right now. So very complimentary and very complimentary of the work that Dr. Foster and her group with our education recovery specialist and those leaders, the work that they provided, they laid the foundation for us. And we're still continuing to build upon those. So thank you very much. And exciting things going on here in Menifee County, even though, you know, we were through a little bit of a curve ball this week. We'll we'll hope to get that fastball back in and working next week.
Well, thank you so much, Superintendent Spencer, and for the flexibility and nimbleness that you and your colleague superintendent show in in an age where COVID is calling the plays. So thank you. We really appreciate it a lot. Board members, do you have questions? Yes, Mr. Bowling.
Lou, yes.
Please.
I wanted to ask the superintendent, because obviously, over my many years as a school board attorney, I was involved in nickel tax. And in the legislature, I was involved with matching those nickel taxes. How how well did your election go? I mean, how 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 well did you win that election?
It was a very unique year in Menifee County. Of course, we did have to do a recall. And the election was held on January 3rd. So just right after New Year's. And the election results, I think we won by about 95 votes. There are 6,300 people in Menifee County. Of course, that's birthed upon. And we there's about 1,1100 votes that were cast, and we won by 90 votes. And we had a lot of opposition. Dr. Foster can attest to a lot of the things that we faced here. Had a lot of folks that was previously serving on on the school board. Of course, that was when state management was right in full force and was very complimentary of the county. You know, you probably don't hear many districts that are under state management that actually pass a nickel tax. But everyone got behind us. The mayor put out a full page ad in the newspaper, county judge, state representative, Representative Hale, you know, they were very supportive in this whole process. So we won by about 90 votes. And in a small community, 90 votes is is that's a pretty good feat, considering all the opposition that we had with against us.
How much money did you raise before you before you got your state match?
I'm sorry, I couldn't. I didn't hear you, Mr. Bowling.
How how much money did you raise from the nickel tax before you got your state match?
We went from basically having a bonding capacity of about $170,000 up to about four or five million. And then we had urgent needs money that kicked in. And we ended up getting being able to build almost a $17 million elementary school. Without the nickel tax, we would have still been in a 1957 building and to where we were having to just it was kind of like throwing money down a bottomless pit. So bonding capacity went from about 170,000. Well, like I said, we built about a 16 to 18 million dollar elementary school and still have some money left over to do some other projects. Hopefully, within another couple of years, we'll be able to renovate and do some renovations at the high school with HVAC units. Without the nickel tax, there is no way we've been able to to build a new elementary school here.
Congratulations, Superintendent.
Thank you. And without the without the work of our local leaders here and, you know, our our teachers, our, I mean, everyone went to bat for us. I mean, classified staff members, you know, it was it was truly a team effort.
And I think Ms. Sloan has a question.
Hi. Nice to meet you, Superintendent Spencer. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Just curious, I'm not far from you here in Morehead, Kentucky. But I grew up in Knott County, Kentucky, and I went to K8 school. And they still have all of their K8 schools. And I'm just curious, you don't hear much about a new school being built that is a K8 school. And I was wondering how that decision was made, if you had some research or data, or if it was community led, just how you came to the decision of having a K8 school instead of a separate elementary and middle school?
Okay. Well, first of all, of course, I've been familiar with K8 buildings. I worked in Breathitt County for several years at Jackson Independent. And of course, familiar with Perry County, Knott County, know all those superintendents. But Menifee County was very, you know, we were kind of unique to start with. We had a K8 building that was already in existence within the county at Menifee Elementary. So all of our middle school students automatically went, once they left Bots Elementary after the fifth grade, they automatically went to Menifee Elementary. So what we've named the new school, because when you get into middle school, some of those kids were starting to complain, hey, we're still in elementary school. And, you know, they want to be classified as middle school students. So we named the elementary school, it's Menifee Central. So that's kind of how with Bots Elementary, when we purchased the property for the new elementary or the new Menifee Central, it's actually, and you look at Menifee County, Menifee County is shaped like a heart. And the new elementary will be pretty much basically in the center of Menifee County. So it's three miles from Bots Elementary and three miles from Menifee Elementary. So it's kind of, it's not a big change. And plus, there was a new road that was constructed through Menifee County. So it's it's really, it was a kind of a no brainer to put all those students in the one building. All of our middle school students will be on the top floor, and the elementary will be on the bottom floor. So there will be very little interaction with the middle school and elementary students. So should make the transition from elementary to middle school should be a seamless process. And that was that's one of the major things of doing is kind of eliminating that transition piece from elementary to middle school. And, you know, with with having just the nine through 12 with one high school, should make transitions should be a lot easier for us.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions for Superintendent Spencer? All right. Thank you, Tim, so much for your great work and for that leadership from the heart that you always demonstrate and for all the great things that are happening across Menifee County.
Thank you, Chairman Young. You all have a great day.
And board members, we're still doing really well on time. And Kelly, if you don't mind, I would turn our attention instead of to 15B to item 15C, because I see that Executive Director Anthony Myers is here with us from Advance Kentucky and is providing an annual short report about the work that they're doing. Is that okay, Kelly?
Sure. That's just fine with me.
All right. I do want to throw a wrench in your morning. Welcome, Executive Director Myers. And we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all having us here today and being able to share our program updates with you, Board Chair Young. And just wanted to congratulate the commissioner and say that we're glad to have him back in Kentucky. Always glad to bring a top educator back to the state, back into the fold. So I'll go ahead and get started and jump right in. I understand we are being conscious of time today. I'll just draw your attention to four things that I want to hope you take away from today's presentation. One is, during the presentation, I hope you gain a understanding of our response to COVID and how we've tried to support our schools best we can at the end of last year, going into this year current, and how we plan to support them in the future. And secondly, I'd also like to highlight the continued success of the AP program, the College Readiness Program, that initially got us started as a as a program, I guess, back in 2008. But I also want to take time today, time permitting, to relay the gains that we've been seeing in our Algebra I program, which was an outgrowth of the AP program, started about six years ago. And then also the dramatic expansion of CS opportunities that we've had the good fortune to be able to provide schools this past summer, starting this summer. So in light of COVID. So and I'll just, if I may, can I just ask for the slide to be advanced and go that way rather than?
Joe, what's great about that?
Okay. So if you could just cue us up on slide two. Okay, so Commissioner, you're not new to Kentucky, but maybe new to understanding us. So I thought it would be a good idea to have an introduction of what who Advance Kentucky is. And I'm not going to go through all the items on this list, but the immediate Advance Kentucky staff, you can see on the left, that's the core staff that largely made up of either active or retired, or not active, formerly active or recently retired Kentucky teachers, all well accomplished in their area. Many of them have great accomplishments in AP. But provide the expertise for the content that when we go out into schools and work with schools and help them, these are the people going out and working with them. Advance Kentucky is part of a larger nonprofit called Kentucky Science and Technology Corporation, whose mission is not just in education, it's also in research and workforce development, trying to, in an effort to help the state maintain Kentucky's global competitiveness. And we make investments in research, taking those those research ideas to industry and the development, hopefully. But if you're going to do all that, and you have to have education to start, you have to have the people that can do that type of work. So that's where we fit in in KSTC. And you'll see on our program support, Terry Samuel is our KSTC president, our CFO. But I also, at this point, want to mention that there's about 125 other Kentucky teachers that we contract with annually, that all the the data that you'll see today and all the work that I'll talk about, they've done it. Our content staff lead it. But we rely on Kentucky teachers to really get this work done. And I think it's worth recognizing them for that. The partnership and support, you'll see, we've had a number of partners throughout the years. Not all of those are active, but they're all certainly all critical to us getting where we are today. Next slide, please. So I've mentioned a couple of times, you know, we started in 2008. The College Readiness Program is really what got Advance Kentucky started. It's an AP math, science, and English program aimed at increasing access and opportunity and ultimately success for students who wouldn't traditionally identify or enroll in an AP course. So we go into schools and really help them rethink, who is an AP student? Where are they in the schools? And, you know, there may be more, well, there are more, certainly more, than what traditionally find their way to those courses. So we go in with that expectation and then offer professional development and other resources to help those schools find those kids and get them to success. And ultimately into post-secondary, hopefully that has an impact on post-secondary success. One of the obstacles that we saw very early on for students to enter into an advanced coursework was their foundation in math. We kept running up against a wall of kids not feeling comfortable going into an advanced math and science course because they just didn't have the math background or didn't feel confident in their math enough to engage in those courses. So with in collaboration with KDE, a couple of years ago, we started the Access to Algebra Program, which aims to not doesn't have to give students Algebra I by the time they leave eighth grade, but we definitely want a foundation, we're understanding for Algebra I by the time they leave eighth grade, and seeing how we can impact that. And for those of you who are familiar with our College Readiness Program, the Access to Algebra Program looks just like it. Just change AP. Just change AP and take that out and put in PSAT eight nine. So and then Computer Science Initiatives, this has been ongoing since really 2008, but was really taken off when we became the Code.org Regional Learning Partner in 2015, beginning of 2016. And allowed us to dramatically expand the professional development we were able to offer to computer science teachers. And that's a K 12 offering, but focuses on still that AP CS Principles course and expanding that course as part of our original program. Excuse me. And then I'll talk more about how that's grown over the last summer. Next slide please. So COVID, last March, March 13th. And like everyone, like all of our schools, we were struggling for ways, trying to figure out, how do we support, how do we help get all of our AP students to the finish line here with about six weeks left in the school year? And I have to give a huge shout out again to all the teachers in the program and all those teachers I mentioned earlier. Everybody really just pulled together and helped us create a website, kyap2020.com. This is a provisional website that we created, had it up by the end of March to provide live study sessions. Normally, in a given year, we would be doing in-person study sessions for kids, helping them get ready for the exams. But we pivoted and converted all those to live online sessions. Went out and found the people available and found the students. All in all, it ended up 60, we did 67 online, live online review sessions between the end of March and beginning of May, when the exams started, first part of May. And we chose to offer this statewide. And mainly, there was nothing prohibiting us to restrict it to our active schools. So we did open it up to all schools at this time. And that ended up being a great thing. We were able to bring in a lot more students than we normally would have just having in-person sessions. So I don't want to say there's a good thing about COVID, but if there is some good things, you know, that might be a slight silver lining. It's definitely something we're going to continue to explore going forward. All in all, we had about 7,500 participants, that's teachers and students, helping them get ready for those exams last year. And then summer came along and we also, once again, got those teachers together, developed and converted all of our professional development to online, all of our summer professional development. We partner with universities for offer the APSIs, but we do some pre-AP training professional development, the CS professional development as well as the professional development that goes along with the middle school program. So all that was converted online. We were able to continue that as we had all in the past. And as we stand here today, we've cumulatively had about 14,000 online participants in all of our trainings and services that we've offered. I thought this was an interesting number. We're 800,000 meeting minutes, that's cumulative meeting minutes of all those teachers, all those students. Just an interesting number in the times that we live in. And how COVID has changed, we're pursuing in collaboration with Babbel, which is a virtual learning institute out of Barron County, Kentucky, to offer AP chemistry to districts that didn't have it, that may have students interested in it. So that's another way that I think COVID has challenged us to rethink the work that we do. And our definite preference is always to have a student, I mean, a teacher in the classroom if we can. But this is an interesting experiment for us, for schools that might not yet have that teacher in place. So and for the remainder of the school year, we're ready to either continue online, in person. We're responsive to whatever, whatever happens for our students. Next slide please. Won't spend a lot of time on this, this is just an overall profile of where we are with our three programs, number of schools, number of teachers, number of enrollments that we support, just to give you a broad view of all the work that we're doing. Next slide please. So the College Readiness Program specifically, next slide. Once again, I won't spend a lot of time on this one, let me catch up here. You'll see at the top, open enrollment. And if you're not familiar with the work that we've done for the past 13 years, this is the center of our, our mission. We believe that access to rigorous coursework should be available to all students willing to accept the challenge of that work. And it's our duty after that to figure out how to meet them where they are and help them find the success that they're looking for. So we require that of all schools that participate in our program. We don't have objections to that, but we do get into deep conversations about just what that means. You know, it does not mean that we want students to jump into the calculus class not having had pre-cal. But it, but it does mean for us to, it does mean to go back down through your math classes and question who's on track, who's on the path to be in those courses, to ultimately get into college and be successful in those career pathways that might need those courses. So just a strict, a good reevaluation of that. I do want to take a moment though, especially given last year with COVID. We had, we set growth goals, you'll see at the bottom, there are incentives for schools and teachers that meet really exceptional growth goals. And we do this annually, this isn't something new. But I think it's worth noting that last year, despite COVID, despite the challenges of AP, despite knowing what even what the exam would look like until a few weeks out, we had eight schools still meet their growth goal. And these are aggressive growth goals. And I just want to take a moment to name off those schools because it just demonstrates their commitment to their students. They figured it out, they got it done. And all of our schools really did well, but these schools specifically met their goal. And that is Central Harden High School, East Ridge High School, Frederick Douglass, Knott County Central, Mead County, Model Laboratory School, Morgan County High School and Paducah Tillman. Just congratulations to those guys for achieving that. Next slide please. And this is a good overview of where we are in the state with the College Readiness Program. You'll see two colors, the lighter color, purple, our schools that we've worked with in the past. The program is a three-year model. We have been in those schools and now out of those schools. Not to say that we don't still have contact with those schools or still work with them in some capacity, but they're in one of the prior cohorts. The darker colors are the active schools. And then the dots you see on the map are the active individual AP MSc teachers. Two years ago, we started working with, well, we had a challenge. Schools were reaching out to us and asking for the program supports to help new AP teachers that they were onboarding. And we didn't have something, a ready answer for them. We had program elements that they could participate in, but not something comprehensive that really provided a mentor for that new AP teacher. So we've created that individual AP MSc, our individual teacher part of the program to help serve those teachers and any teacher can comply to that. And we've had, we've been able to take about 15 teachers each of the first two years, but we've had well over 100 applicants in each of the two years it's been, it's been up and running. So there's a lot of demand for that. Next slide please. So every year, we like to show our new cohorts' growth. And if you look, you've got all the way back to 2009, that was our first group of schools, 12 schools that we brought on in 2009. And I was actually in one of those schools in that initial cohort. But this past year, Cohort 12, they set a record, which I think is even more impressive considering it was COVID. But they set a record for growth. That's an increase in, one-year increase in the number of AP qualifying scores over prior. And there are seven schools in that cohort and they collectively increased 198%, which is just incredible. So kudos to them. But you know, it just shows that, I think this dramatic one-year growth shows that the teachers are there, the students are there. It's the right support and the right expectations that you bring to the school. And it's not that, you know, those things weren't there before, but it's just how do you figure it out to provide these AP opportunities to your students? And how do you apply those expectations to get those students in those courses? Next slide please. And this is our three-year growth pattern for cohorts one through nine, which is all we have for, we can only go up to cohort nine with three years of data, but it is current. And this is what we see over average, over all schools, percent change from baseline to year three by the time they exit the program. And we bring up this slide, we like this slide because we're reaching those underrepresented groups of students, those kids who are traditionally not equitably represented in AP courses. You don't see them in the AP courses, but, but the schools are doing a great job of going out, finding the kids that succeed and bringing them in. Next slide please. This is a piece of research that we're doing with KY Stats. That's a match pair analysis work that we're doing where we take our students, four years of our students and compare them to a control group of other students in Kentucky. Just looking at patterns of AP participation, and we're also tracking in the post-secondary. I won't get into that today, I know we're pressed for time. But I want to do highlight the patterns of AP participation and success that they can find in high schools. So on the top pie chart, you'll see Advanced Kentucky students. Should see about 24,000 students. And on the bottom, you see the control group. And what you're looking at is the number of students who have attempted at least one AP exam. Okay, and there's no surprise really on this slide. We're an AP program, we go into schools, we ask kids to enter AP courses and we ask you to persist and take the exam and hopefully find success. So we should look like this. But what is interesting, what I do want you to note is the number of kids. There's three times as many kids. And these kids started off on a similar path in the control group versus the Advanced Kentucky students. And then I want you to remember that three times number and go to the next slide. And here you'll see the success of those kids. So you take those 21,000 kids and 45% of those kids earned at least one qualifying score or more on an AP exam compared to the control group. Looks very similar, but if you remember back in the previous slide, two-thirds of those kids didn't have the opportunity of AP that these kids have. So our takeaway from this is there are about three times as many kids that can engage in rigorous academic coursework if given the opportunity to do so. And we feel this is what this demonstrates. And then there's a well-documented impact of AP on these kids going into post-secondary. And our research with KY Stats has reinforced that for Kentucky students, the national work that we've seen done. And it's, once again, it's about expectations and creating opportunity for these kids. And then next slide please. One of the other questions we've had of our program, since we're now on our 13th cohort, what happens to schools after us? And are they able to sustain these programs? And we are happy to say that based on data that I've been able to get out of KDE's open house, we see that 64% of schools are able to either maintain plus or minus one or increase the number of AP courses that they offer in their schools. We count that as a success. But one of the other things that we've started to notice is there are other, there's correlations to other academic indicators that we find interesting. And right now, they really just remain an observation and a question. But I wanted to include this slide, one, to show that this is a program that can be sustained after participation, which I think is an important piece. But, but also, we're exploring ways on, how does this program further impact the school? We have anecdotal evidence and we have our ideas that we have from working in the school so closely. But this is just a piece of data that we found recently, that we find interesting. Next slide please. Okay, Access to Algebra, this is our middle school program, the next slide. Once again, you'll see a very similar diagram, looks like the one we, we mentioned or described earlier. We tried to replicate as many of the program elements from the AP program as we could. The key differences are the assessment that they use. This particular program uses the PSAT eight nine. We all were, when we created this, we were all set to use the ACT Explorer, but that wasn't, wasn't, we weren't able to use it. So we use the PSAT eight nine. And it's turned out to be a really great assessment for us because of the way it's normed with the SAT and other academic indicators. It's just been a positive for us. But other key differences there are also, sorry, had it pop up. Other key differences there are, rather than focusing on single AP courses, this is the whole math middle school group. All sixth, seventh and eighth graders, students for sure, we include six if they're in the middle school. And I'm going to go ahead and go to the next slide. And there's our current area, we're in cohorts, we have four cohorts of these schools now. Cohort one has moved out of the program initially, they're the cohort that helped us build this program. And schools was, or I'm sorry, the places on the map that have a star, they have more than one's middle school in that district. Next slide. So what are we seeing? So in three years of growth from the PSAT eight nine cohort one, you see two colors here. The first color is on track and this language means that they're on track to be, to meet college readiness math benchmark by the time they graduate high school. Green means they've already met the benchmark for that, that grade level. So collectively, these students are within one year of being where they should be, basically, for the PSAT eight nine. But over the course of three years, we've seen that increase from 51% to 65% in the school, which we think is a significant increase. Next slide. And now looking at, and the previous slide was one eighth grade class to the next. This is one seventh grade class to the eighth grade class. In 2018, the average seventh grade or class, 35% of the students, let me make this a little bit larger so I can read it, were on track or at grade level benchmark to be college-ready in math by the time they graduated. That number increased to 65% in one year, huge increase. And one of the things that we would like to do is engage with KY Stats to be able to attract these students to see if that is able to persist beyond this. Next slide. And one of the ways we hope to be able to do this is using KPREP. So here are KPREP scores for those same schools. We do have their baseline year, which was a development year for us. And then our, well, baseline year prior to the first year of development. Program year zero was their development year and then they've helped us in year one and year two. But shows their progression in KPREP scores over that timeline compared to the state average. That, I think they've done very well. So we're encouraged by this and this is what's keeping us going for those later cohorts. And next slide. And for our Computer Science Initiatives, next slide. So I mentioned earlier, we've been the Code.org Regional Learning Partner since 2016. We've had three good cohorts of primarily middle school and high school teachers adding new CS courses to their schools. This past year, as we do with all of our work, you know, you start seeing other opportunities, you start seeing things that will help grow access to these courses even more greatly. So we've initiated a campaign called Think CS, Teach CS, Do CS. We realize now that there's a lot of CS opportunities out there for, for schools. But one of the things they need to be able to do is organize and process all of these opportunities. So we are a CS for all state partner and we are endorsed script facilitators. And what that means is we go in with districts and help them develop a CS strategy, a K 12 CS strategy for their district. And then the Teach CS is all the products that you may have heard of, Code.org. We're also working with, one of the new projects we're working with is Somerset Community College to promote a digital literacy course around 3D printing. The Java course, APCSA, we're promoting it as well in collaboration with College Board. And then we've also recently started working with Apple to promote Swift programming language and Swift certification. All those, I'll explain a little bit more about those as I go through the next few slides. But the last part is Do CS. So we need to encourage school districts to not just develop the plan, learn how to teach it. learn how to teach it, but also instill in our students and our teachers, what do you do with it? And that's where the Hour of Code and programs like Girls with Code step in. So we're presenting this to districts as we go out, trying to help them develop these strategies. Next slide, please. So a brief overview of CS programs. This year, in the 2021, these are our cohorts in the various programs that I mentioned earlier. We have in our APCS Principles and CS Discoveries, you'll see a number of dots around this map. These are active teachers going through, teaching one of those two courses to their students in some way. That I could say less to. But they are actively teaching this year. Next slide. One of our new programs, our new partnerships is with Apple Computers. And focusing on again, the middle school and the high school, trying to develop pathways towards Swift app certification, Swift app development certification. And these teachers are our early adopters. These are teachers that are going to be, they're going through the program that we're developing. But they're also going to eventually be our facilitators and mentors for future cohorts that we bring on for this particular programming language. Next slide. And you'll see more dots added. I mentioned earlier, we are partnering with Somerset Community and Technical College to promote digital literacy with 3D printing. We see this as a critical foundation of class to provide support into the CS pathways that we're working on developing. And we were particularly interested in 3D printing because it provides the hands-on aspect of computing. Computing just isn't sitting behind a laptop, writing code all day. And that's part of it certainly. But computer science is much broader than that. And we think this is a key piece to that. And the next slide, please. And then our last one, through our work with code.org promoting APCS Principles, we've seen, we've had a lot of requests for further professional development, further opportunities for students. APCSA was a natural outgrowth of that. There are plenty of schools and teachers equipped to step in and grow APCSA programs in their schools. And that map, that final map, before I go to the next slide, every dot represents a teacher teaching CS this year in one of those four programs. Next slide. And finally, just to give you an update on growth of AP computer science this past year. Didn't see quite the growth we've had in last year of APCS exams, but we did still see growth, which I think is encouraging. And the orange bars compared to the blue are where we've added APCS Principles to the state and that opportunity for the state. So it's been a big impact on students' interest in CS. Excuse me, and a big impact in being able to just reach out and find more kids interested in these pathways. So I think that's the last slide. And I'll take any questions.
Oops.
Lou, this is Lou.
I'm having a problem with the mute button. Yes, Lee, please.
Have you got data on your computer science students based on free introduced lunch and minorities and what their success is in those courses?
We will have. I do not currently have that data, but we will have that. And we will add that to any future update. And I'd be happy to follow up with you once we have that data and show that.
What really is impressing me about this is in the AP classes, I've talked to some of the teachers and they actually had to go out and recruit students to get them to take some of the AP classes because the self-esteem isn't there. They don't think they can do the work. But if you listen to our GE honorary, a few minutes ago, we had giving an honor. He talked about the need to have schools where their employees' children want to go to school and to hire people who come through with some of these advanced programs. If you look at your data and just think about the number of free introduced lunch children that may never have taken a college course or may never have taken at least one in the area where the economy's growing. We left a lot of people that, as you say, they're there, they're capable, but they don't know they're capable. Once they learn they're capable, then they can really contribute. And I think it's very exciting. The last thing I mentioned, you said you had 100 applications for teachers to take that CS element. If they take that course, they can on their own go back and start offering CS in their school? Do they need further support or what?
So two answers to that. The 100 applications were for our AP program, which is inclusive of CS teachers. So it would be, the 100 applications are across math, science, and English. But yes, all of this professional development, the teachers can go back into the schools and they're actually teaching it concurrently. So if they've had some prior background, it really depends on the course. Some courses are more predisposed to be able to teach concurrently. Others, you would want like a Java programming course. You would want more knowledge of Java before you were really prepared to teach the kids. But the CS Principles course, you definitely can teach concurrently with about a one week summer of professional development.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Anthony. It was delightful to have you here today and to hear about the work.
Thank you all for having us and always glad to be here. And we'd be happy to follow up on any of these if any of y'all have any questions. Those of you who know us, we have a lot more data. And we'd be happy to discuss it in more detail and share more thoroughly.
All right, thank you. Board members, just a quick process check here. It's about 10 minutes till one. You have had a brief comfort break, but no lunch. We have made good time on the agenda today. We have about 45 to 55 minutes left on our predictions for the remainder of the agenda. So just let me know how you want to roll. Do we want to go ahead and plow through the agenda? That was the wrong verb choice. Continue to work swiftly through the agenda for the next 45 minutes or so? Or would you like to go ahead and take a 30-minute break and come back? And we will still finish early, but come back to finish our agenda after a lunch break. Open to the will of the group.
Roll on.
This is Mike Bowling. I would just assume, go on through the information because I've got to, you know, I've got a dental appointment at 2:30, so.
Oh, right, right. And that's that old dad joke, 2:30 is the time when you go to the dentist, just saying. Lee, were you saying roll on as well?
Be fine with me, but I'll be swayed by others.
All right.
And Lou, this is Andy, just a second. We have to just, due to the limitations of our streaming service, I think we're going to take just the shortest break so we can switch to our afternoon.
Okay. Okay, that will be fine.
And do a five-minute break, 10 minutes.
Let's take 10-minute break, start again at one, grab something else to drink. And then we will work swiftly through the remainder of the agenda. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We will back up to item 15B. And I will turn it over to Associate Commissioner Dr. Kelly Foster to discuss proposed amendments to 703-KAR5:280, School Improvement Procedures Being Revised to Align With Requirements of Senate Bill 158. Kelly.
Great, good afternoon, thank you. As Chair Lou mentioned, I am bringing to you today for the first reading our School Improvement Reg, KAR5:280. And we are having to make some adjustments to that due to Senate Bill 158. And if someone could pull up the first slide, that would be greatly appreciated. Great, thank you. So next slide, please. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background as we move to Senate Bill 158 and its passage and where we need to go from there. And I believe Whitney Crowe, my policy advisor, is also on here today if we need to tap into any of her expertise. Let's see, I'll give Joette just a second. I think she's trying to. I can't say it's between, I'm in between you and lunch. I mean, I'm the kicking off towards the end. You guys are doing great today.
Yeah, no, we're plowing through to the end. Thank you, Kelly.
So I'll go ahead and start sharing as she tries to get slide number two pulled up there. So in January 28th of 2019, the U.S. Department of Education sent a clarifying email to states about how the federal law identifies targeted support and improvement schools. And so if you were familiar before ESSA, these schools would have been what we called focus schools. And so ESSA requires each state to identify any school that has one or more subgroups performing as poorly as any of the Title I schools identified in the bottom 5% using the same methodologies that the state uses for CSI identifications. So even though there's not any flexibility in the methodology, states do have some flexibility in determining how often you're going to identify ATSI schools, which are additional targeted and support schools, as well as if they're going to identify the ATSI schools from all schools or from a smaller group of schools that had previously been identified as TSI. Are slides just jammed? Or do I need to try to find this slide deck on my computer and pull it up?
I see it on my end. I don't know what's going on. I'll try again.
Well, I see it, but I need to be on slide two, and I think you're on slide four.
And board members, if it's easier for you to follow along, we do have Kelly's presentation in the portal.
Sure, I'll just, I'll keep moving along. Okay, I'm on slide three now that says at the top, prior state law. So Senate Bill 1, 2017 identified what the definition was for targeted support improvement school, a TSI school, and an additional targeted support improvement school, ATSI. And in the fall of 2018, we had 418 schools that were identified as ATSI. And of those schools, 10 remained in the ATSI status for the 2021 school year. And to date, since the start of ESSA, we have had no schools identified for TSI. Now, the issue with the language in Senate Bill 1, excuse me, Senate Bill 1, 2017, how it was defined, TSI and ATSI, did not meet the federal classification of that. So fortunately, one of the very positive pieces of Senate Bill 158, 2020, is that we were able to clean up the language of how TSI and ATSI were identified to meet the federal definition and to meet what is in our state ESSA plan. So currently, with the language change in Senate Bill 158, the definition of TSI and ATSI in state law matches what is in federal law and also is what is in our ESSA plan. So that's a big positive of Senate Bill 1, 158. So I am on slide four now. That, here we go, I think we're on the same page. New State Law on Targeted Support and Improvement. So this is just the definition, the two new definitions from Senate Bill 158, beginning with the 2021 school year and annually thereafter, the department shall identify a school for targeted support and improvement if the school has one or more of the same subgroups as defined by ESSA, whose performance is in the state accountability system by level, elementary, middle, or high, is at or below that of all students in any of the lowest performing 5% of schools for three consecutive years. So there's your first definition for targeted support and improvement. And then part B walks you through the definition for, beginning with the 2122 school year and every three years thereafter, the department shall identify a school for additional targeted support and improvement if a school has one or more subgroups as defined by ESSA, whose performance in the state accountability system by level, elementary, middle, or high, is at or below the summative performance of all students in any of the lowest performing 5% of all schools. So we have the definition now for targeted and for additional targeted. That align? Next slide, please. And this is where it gets a little bit easier to see and understand. In slide five, we have the entrance criteria summarized for TSI and ATSI, beginning with the 2021 school year and the 2122 school year. And so I will go ahead and speak briefly. You know, last year, we did not have a state assessment. So the schools that were currently ATSI or CSI still have that status from the federal government at this time. And so these dates that I have before you, 2021 and 2122, that may change depending on what U.S. Ed does with accountability. As Rhonda and her team mentioned earlier, you know, the letter came from secretary to boss that makes us think there will be some sort of accountability system in this, or, excuse me, some sort of accountability test in the spring of '21, but we don't know that for sure. But this is the timeline that we're working on right now. So identifying beginning annually, or, excuse me, beginning in the 2021 school year would be TSI. And then every three years after that in 2122 would be the ATSI. Next slide, please. Now, this slide really talks about the overall changes in Senate Bill 158, which is the school improvement, or, excuse me, the overall changes from Senate Bill 158 to our School Improvement Reg. So the first one being, before Senate Bill 158, we identified comprehensive support improvement schools every year. So any school that was in the bottom 5% every year or had a graduation rate below 80% was identified as CSI. And so Senate Bill 158 moves the identification of those schools from once a year to every three years. And this is an option in ESSA. So we are aligned federally on that. A second change in Senate Bill 158 to school improvement deals with the audit teams. Senate Bill 1, 2017 gave a school that was identified as CSI an option to use KDE as an audit team or to go outside with a different audit team that was approved by KDE. Senate Bill 158 requires KDE to conduct all of those audits of the CSI schools. Item number three, or the third bullet down, permits the appeal of any judgment made by the department of a principal superintendent, school, or school district which is considered grossly unfair. So if we backtrack, before Senate Bill 1, 2017, there wasn't an appeals, there wasn't an appeals process in that previous legislation. So throughout this process, we are determining if the principal has the capacity to lead the turnaround work at the school and if the district has the capacity to help support the turnaround work at that school. Senate Bill 1, 2017 took out that appeals process. Senate Bill 158 puts the process back in. So I think everyone, superintendents, principals, staff at KDE, the board, I think everybody's in agreement, having that appeals process in there is a good thing. And then the last piece that I'll note is that it mandates the turnaround efforts in CSI schools be led by an entity on the Kentucky Board of Education's approved turnaround vendor list, which is defined in the bill and maybe include, may include KD's staff to serve as the turnaround team. So I will be coming back to you guys in the spring. We'll be developing a process internally about coming up with that vendor list. There was a vendor list probably 2009, 2010, when we had persistently low achieving schools that districts could choose from if they didn't want to work with the department during that timeframe. No one chose any of those vendor lists. Senate Bill 1, 2017 gave districts an option to use KDE as their turnaround team or use a different entity that was approved. We did have one district under that legislation that didn't work with KDE initially because they had already kind of identified their schools as low performing and had been working with an outside entity to help them target some support for those schools. So they continued on with using that same outside entity. So those are the major changes that I'm bringing to you in the first reading of 280. The additional slides actually go through line by line, section by section. If you want to go through those, we can. If not, I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have at this time. I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have at this time. We have presented to, we've been in front of LSAC once, we have been in front of SAC, and we have also been in front of Rhonda's advisory, whose name I can't think of right this second, but the accountability that the DAC serve on. So we have been in front of three advisories before presenting to you today and have received positive feedback from all of those. Chair Young, I believe you're on mute.
There you go. What questions of Kelly or Whitney might you guys have? Claire?
I just have, I have one on slide eight where it refers to the new definition for model and practice school. Could you expand on that a little bit for me to explain?
Sure. And actually, I'll let Whitney chime in here. So this has to do with a language change due to Model Lab being their own entity now, not under Madison County Schools, but being under Eastern Kentucky University. Whitney, are you available to chime in on that one?
Yeah, I am. This is just to incorporate the changes that we saw in House Bill 366 that mandate that model participate in the state accountability system, just to ensure that were they to meet the school improvement requirements or identification as comprehensive support and improvement or targeted support and improvement that we have covered those schools. You'll see language as well, you know, related to charter schools. We're really just trying to be as forward thinking as we can so that, you know, the regulation meets our needs as they evolve. But this change is just to incorporate, as I said, the legislative changes that we also saw relating to EKU's model and practice school.
So can I just follow up? So this, this really is strictly for Model Lab enrichment, or does it incorporate possibility for other model and practice schools in other locations?
So the way, the way the House bill was written, only EKU can establish a model and practice school in the state of Kentucky. So for now, that is the only school that that language would apply to. It would require statutory changes for it to be extended to other so-called model and practice schools. But like I said, at this point, there is no statutory authority for any other university to establish such.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications, board members?
Lou, I have a question, just on that same issue. So if another university wanted to establish a model or practice school as a way of strengthening the clinical component of teacher education, does that fall under this regulation, or would that fall under a regulation with CPE?
That does not fall under this regulation. This regulation is strictly for school improvement.
I see, I see.
I don't know if Todd wants to weigh in on that.
Yeah, that's right. The school improvement regulation that Kelly's proposing is updated, incorporates the model and practice school language because of the recent change that Whitney outlined in legislation. Before that, the Model Lab School at EKU fell under Madison County Public Schools. They had a contractual agreement to operate that school on behalf of Madison County. So all of their accountability information rolled up under Madison County Public Schools. And that's the way any type of intervention action would be taken through Kelly's office. But now, since they are a separate entity from a school district, that's the reason that you see the specific language being updated in Kelly's regulation, just so that we're sure to cover all of the various types of school entities that may exist in Kentucky that would fall under this.
Just one other question. Thank you for that. Does this permit a school principal or school superintendent to suggest that the audit team must include those with expertise or representation of those who have worked in schools that have similar populations?
So as we've discussed before, we contract with Cognitiv, Cognia, which is a national organization, and use their standards of school quality through our diagnostic review process. And yes, we do have language that talks about having former principals, superintendents, current educators, post-secondary parents. There is always an intentional focus of trying to make our teams as diverse as possible. Sometimes that is just not possible. We do bring in outside educators from outside the United States as part of those teams to try to increase our diversity. But that's something that we will continue to try to improve on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions for Kelly? All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Excellent. We appreciate it. Thank you. And thanks for your flexibility, Kelly, around today's agenda.
No problem. I knew you'd get to me eventually.
I appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is to hear from General Counsel Todd Allen, who will present a review of regulations. And the first one, Mr. Bowling does regard the non-resident student agreement appeal. So Todd, I will turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that I have is just to alert the board that we have provided you with the updated hearing officer's report in your portal. That's both on the public and private portal, and gives you an overview of where all of the board's various regulations are in process that you've adopted to date. That is a process that carries on after the board adopts those, and we provide that document to you so that you can see where all of those various regulations are in the process until they become effective. I'll pause there. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have about that.
That is really helpful, Todd. Thank you.
Yes.
Lou?
Yes, sir.
Mike Bowling. I just wanted to tell everybody that per our, our education earlier in the year, I am going to turn off my camera during this portion while it's being discussed. And then once, it once the discussion's over, or the vote, or whatever you all are going to do, I will then join back in. But I do not wish to take a vote under, for either Pineville or the Bell County School System.
All right. Thank you. Todd, is that okay on your end?
That's fine. We'll note that Mr. Bowling is stepping out of the meeting and abstaining from this matter.
Thank you. And then Jennifer can reach out, back out to you by text, Mike.
So the next matter that is on the board's agenda is adoption of a final order in the matter of Board of Education for Pineville Independent School District versus Board of Education for the Bell County School District. Just to briefly update the board, to call your attention to kind of the reason that this is before you. State statute provides that school districts are able to count students for the purposes of claiming SEEK funding that reside within their school district, and they are not able to count students who do not reside within that school district unless there is a written agreement with the school district where they reside, to allow the non-resident district to count them for the purposes of claiming SEEK funding. State law also provides that when two school districts cannot agree to a written agreement regarding non-resident students, they can appeal that to the commissioner and ask that the commissioner help in assisting them come to an agreement. If the commissioner makes a decision that either one of the parties disagree with, they can then request a KRS 13B administrative hearing where they put on evidence before a hearing officer, and the hearing officer will give a recommended order to the State Board of Education that then ultimately you all take final action on. I have provided to you, and it's also on the board's portal, the recommended order from the hearing officer, as well as what are called exceptions that were filed by both parties. And the exceptions are essentially their objections or counterarguments to what the hearing officer may have included in his or her final recommended order. And then I've also provided to all of you a confidential and privileged memorandum, as well as a draft final order for the board to consider. At this point in time, if the board needs to take further action to deliberate and discuss this matter before it enters into a final order, the Open Meetings Act does allow you to go into closed session, and I would recommend that you do so for deliberations. If that's necessary, I'm happy to guide the board through taking action to go into closed session. Alternatively, if deliberations aren't necessary, then the board can entertain motions at this time to adopt a final order.
Thank you, Todd. So I'm sure, as I have, you've had a chance to read through the documentation related to this item. If you would desire time for us to move into closed session and deliberate further on the action, please let me know now. If not, if you feel prepared to move forward to vote on the consideration, we can certainly do that as well. Does anyone feel the need for a closed session? All right, Todd, I think we can move ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair. So then at this time, you can entertain a motion by the board to adopt the final order that's been provided to each of you, that I provided to you. And once that is adopted, that will finalize this matter.
Thank you. And that motion would be, include approving the findings of fact, conclusion of law, and final order in administrative action, number 19 BoE 0019, Pineville Independent Board of Education versus Bell County Board of Education. Do I have such a motion to approve the findings of fact and conclusions in final order?
I so move. Sharon Robinson.
We have a motion from Dr. Robinson. Do we have a second? And a second from Ms. Bat. Any?
A second.
Thank you so much. And because of the confidential nature of the discussion, I don't know that we will have any open discussion, but if you have any procedural questions or questions for Todd at this point that can be conducted in open session, please feel free to ask. Hearing none. I think we will move for a roll call vote. Jennifer, please.
Joanne Adams. Joanne, can you hear us? Okay, we'll come back to Joanne. Claire Bat?
Claire Bat, I vote yes.
Holly Ludworth.
Holly Ludworth, I vote yes.
Elvis Johnson.
Elvis Johnson, I vote yes.
Patrice McCrery.
This is Patrice McCrery. I vote yes.
Cody Johnson.
This is Cody Johnson. I vote yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe, I vote yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, I vote yes.
Lou Young.
This is Lou Young, and my vote is yes.
And we'll try one more time. Joanne Adams.
Jennifer, it appears Joanne has dropped off, so may try to reach out to her and see if we can reconnect her.
I'll do that and also reach out to Mike Bowling. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
During the break, Joanne was having some problems with connecting, so I'm not sure if that might have been some of the problem.
Thank you so much, Cody. We'll see if we can get her back in. Thank you, Todd, for your direction on that and for all of the time and effort you spent working through to a resolution for our consideration today. And the next item is back to Todd on the litigation report.
Sure. Thank you again, Madam Chair. This is the final item that I have for you, at least on the agenda. I have provided to all of the board members on the secure portal an updated litigation report. All of the changes since the last time you've received a report appear in bold-faced font. If there are any specific questions that board members have that require a discussion among the board, then I would recommend that we go into closed session to have that discussion on a specific legal matter and to receive legal advice. But if there aren't any specific questions, then there's no action necessary.
And do we have any board members who would desire that closed session time? All right. Thank you. And in the future, of course, always feel free to let us know in advance if there's something that shows up on the portal, and you have some question or desire for a closed session, you can always make those arrangements. At this time, another one of our favorite parts, Soliana, of our meeting is the chance for board members to share about anything that they have done or of note that they would like to share since our previous meeting. So at this time, I would just encourage you to open mic and feel free to share anything that you would like to.
Sorry, somebody came in. But yeah, I mean, this is great. There's no, I'm, these past few meetings, I've just been, you know, trying to embrace my surroundings and trying to embrace this and, you know, gain as much information as I can. I'm not too fond of the legislative aspect of education. So this, the, these, these meetings have been really important for me to gain that information. So, I mean, I'm personally good. I'm sorry if that's not what you were looking for.
No, 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 no. I just didn't know what you were doing.
Yeah, no, I mean, as I, as I learn more over time, and as I try to kind of settle in to this environment, I feel more adequate and more, I'd say, confident information will come out. But for now, I'm good. But I thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And welcome back, Ms. Adams. Ms. Sloan?
So I just wanted to take a moment to talk about a couple of things. First is something that we have not really mentioned, and I know we have kind of haphazardly and a little bit, but through all of this situation with our schools, I know our parents are frustrated, and I know they're dealing with a lot, teaching students and their children at home, and dealing with the technology problems that we have across the state. But I'd really like to give a shout out to our parents, because the majority of them have been phenomenal. They're going above and beyond and doing things that they've never had to do as parents before. You know, they're, they're being patient and flexible. There are school systems that are allowing students to come in, you know, that are even virtual, that are allowing kids to come in one-on-one, and parents are, you know, adjusting their day to bring, to bring their children in for those one-on-one services, for physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech services, special ed, and lots of other things. They're taking their kids to places to get that Wi-Fi, to make sure that they're, they're completing their work when they don't have it at home. They're doing drives for supplies for our schools. We had a bunch delivered yesterday. It was a parent, one of our faculty members, but he's actually a parent, and dropped off all kinds of supplies that our local community had gathered for, for our students. They're making masks and bringing them. I have a parent that's made all kinds of masks and are bringing them into our schools. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our parents, because they have been phenomenal, and I think they, they deserve some kudos right now, above a lot of us. We talk about our teachers and how hard they're working, and I know that for a fact, but I just wanted to make sure that our parents got some recognition as well. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't say that October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. So I hope that our schools are continuing to learn more about dyslexia, learn more about how it's identified, and how it works with our special ed services, 504 plans, and what our children need. And if teachers or schools or anybody have any questions, they're more than welcome to reach out to me. But during this month especially, I'd like to get that information out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Excellent. I would also like to just share for a moment, I asked Dr. Glass if it would be okay if I could share that Tony Tatman is no longer the interim director of communications for the Kentucky Board of Education and Kentucky Department of Education. The interim has been removed. So Tony, special thank you from me for keeping me straight, for keeping me alive on Twitter, and for all you have done to pave the way for Soliana joining the board, Randy joining the board, Dr. Glass as he transitioned to Kentucky, and a lot of the kudos that we shared with Kevin this morning were mutually shared by you for the, all of the work that you did many, many long- did, many, many long days, many days, many weeks without a single day off over the course of the pandemic. And so we are really excited about that. We are congratulating you on a more permanent position. Our gain is certainly Jefferson County Schools' loss, but congratulations and looking forward to continuing to work with you for several years ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm very honored to be in this position. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Congratulations. Owen, Jason, I'll yield a little bit of time to you two if you want to add, since I stole your thunder on Tony there. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, you did a great job. I'll just join you in expressing our gratitude for Tony for all the work that she's done. It really was, you know, one of the easier things that I've had to deal with coming on was trying to talk Tony into staying. Her work speaks for itself, and I know that I've appreciated her support just as I've gotten started and the work that she did through supporting school districts around the state and the department through all the communication that was necessary under COVID was just exemplary and exceptional. And so we're excited that she's staying on. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm excited about taking the department to the next level with communications, hopefully beyond COVID-19 soon, so.
Very soon, I hope. Thank you. Congratulations again. Other board members, I would put a bug in your ear perhaps if you've had a chance to attend one of the Kentucky School Boards Association's regional meetings as well. Ms. Bat?
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Kentucky School for the Deaf Advisory Group. I took some time to meet with some of the members, and I just wanted to say how committed they are to continuing the good work that is done at the Kentucky School for the Deaf and just commend them for their advocacy and hope that at some point we'll be able to hear from some of them at a board meeting.
Oh, yes, that would be great. Thank you. Holly?
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout out to Allison and to all the other teachers and support staff out there. I mean, we know that your workload has more than doubled and that it's stressful, and just to watch you all triumph in these trying times is something I admire every day. So I just keep up the good work and know that we are, we're struggling with you, but are joyous in what you're able to accomplish right now.
Thank you, Holly, on behalf of myself and all the other teachers in our state. We appreciate that.
Excellent. Lovely. Thank you. All right. Oh, yes, please.
I'll just say thank you to all the staff that got me set up this week. It's been tremendous. They've been a fantastic help. So Dr. Glass, you've got a great crew there that's going to go above and beyond to make sure that we're all taken care of. So thanks to the staff that got me all set up in a short period of time.
Excellent. Thank you. And Randy, it took a village to orient and induct us, so you and Soliana have been easy-peasy. So thank you. Yes, Holly, I think you were going to add something else.
Just one little thing. If you, I just discovered a new view. If you go up to your three dots and click on together mode, it will make you smile.
I think it's weird.
So it's just so funny because we're all just sitting there in chairs. I think it's pretty cute.
Hey, Chair Young, I just want to point out that we are joining the United States Department of Education in recognizing inspirational school employees, which is the RISE Award.
Yes.
And so we are currently taking nominations for any school or district, nonprofit, community, parents or students. And we're looking for outstanding school employees that we can make sure that we honor. And the information for how to apply is, I've put it out on social media, and I think the department has shared it as well. And so we just want to make sure that we can get as many nominees as possible because we've got so many great school employees to make sure that we honor in Kentucky.
Excellent. I'm so glad you mentioned that. I saw it when you pushed it out and then Tony pushed it out for the department as well. So thank you for doing that. And what's the deadline for nominations? You probably don't know off the top of your head.
I think it's Monday.
Okay. It's actually October 12th. So we still have another week. And I think the last time I looked, sorry, my video is off, we still have another week for nominations. And the last time I looked, we had about 25 from a couple of districts. So we certainly would love to see lots of districts nominate at least one person.
Excellent. It's gotten some good buzz on social media for sure. Any other board member shares? All right. Thank you all so much, and thanks for a very efficient meeting today. We appreciate all of your efforts, and it's obvious to me what great preparers you are for these meetings. I'm always so impressed with the level of knowledge that you guys bring to the meeting time after time. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion, Randy Poe.
Thank you, Randy. We have a motion from Dr. Poe. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
And a second from Mr. Bowling. Thank you. And Jennifer, if you would, please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
This is Joanne Adams. I vote yes.
Claire Bat.
Claire Bat votes yes.
Holly Ludworth.
Holly Ludworth votes yes.
Mike Bowling.
Mike Bowling votes yes.
Alvis Johnson.
Alvis Johnson votes no. No, just kidding. He votes yes, too.
Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery votes yes.
Cody Johnson.
Cody Johnson votes yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe votes yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, I vote yes.
And Lou Young.
This is Lou Young. I vote yes. And Mr. Johnson, you just make me twitch when you do things like that. Thank you, everyone. Another very productive meeting. Sure appreciate your time and your talents. Thank you.